All right. Council, could y'all please take your seat?
Where's my purse?
Would y'all close that door, please?
If anyone would like to speak, please sign up. I will now call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present and also the city attorney is present. Madam Secretary?
Citizens petitions. CP 23023, Cameron Cochran, stage two water restrictions.
Thank you. Sir? Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Today I would like to readdress the topic of stage two water conservation and the hypocrisy shown by the leadership of the city of Colleen. I'm aware that Executive Director of Public Works Jeff Reynolds provided the city council with a PowerPoint presentation back on September 5th, the very last presentation of the session. The information shared was allegedly misguided and failed to adequately examine the stage two water conservation crisis properly. For example, his staff only inspected 11 car washes within the city limits. I previously stated that the city has 30 car washes that were active and four under construction within a seven mile radius. I now reconsider this because now I would like to include vehicle dealerships who also wash vehicles before selling them. The revised numbers are 40 car washing stations and three that will soon be constructed and completed within next month and only one with a coming soon sign. Mr. Reynolds presented a failed account of 40 additional car washes with averaging 300 vehicles per day without any restrictions. His presentation showed to the city and the city leadership that the city of Colleen has zero oversight programs, zero regulations under the drought contingency plan. The car wash facilities failed to incorporate any type of recycling water plan even though it's mandated under the International Plumbing Code Regulation and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. That means car wash station owners in Colleen are freely using fresh water supply with zero consequences. Next topic. He kept saying, "Studies show, studies show." Mr. Reynolds said, "Studies showed hand washing is time consuming. Studies show hand washing chemicals go down the drain." I have three new reports within the mayor's package that show the opposite. Car wash managers cut corners, failed to comply with environmental regulations or protections. Employees that work at these facilities have lower wages than an average employee. Household washing is better by far for the environment. Next topic. Chart of the water consumption trends. Mr. Reynolds showed a chart which showed that for the months of June, July, August, and September, water consumption was continually high within the last three years. It's high because there's no regulations. It's high because we have zero enforcement. This chart should be showing a downward trend if we had enforced the water consumption policies. Let's move on. Backflow prevention inspection. All homeowners within the city limits are required to have a backflow prevention inspection each year. The average cost is $60 per household. Result, I pay to ensure my water pressure is correct and my water pipes have no problems, but yet corporate car washing facility owners do not have to pay anything as they are not inspected. In fact, they have no consequences for ignoring any policy or environmental protection agencies. I, as a homeowner, pay more to the city than a large car washing company. Let's move on. Open records request. It took five attempts for me to receive any kind of adequate information from the city attorney. My basic question was, how many registered car washes do we have within the city limits? They did not know. I want to know, has anyone received a warning, a fine, or had their water turned off based on ignoring the stage two water conservation program? They did not know. They did provide me the addresses of 70 local places within the city of Colleen that were stage two issues. I don't know what issues were, but 33 of the addresses were newly constructed homes that had recently grass installed. One address listed was in a city park that is owned by the city of Colleen. One is the Stone Tree Golf Course, a Burger King, an elementary school, and the last one was an address in Belton. Not sure where they're looking at, but they're looking at Belton waters flow for some reason. Now let's look at the comments made by the city council members at the same council workshop on September 5th. A council member said, "The city of Colleen is like any other municipality. We are not a communist form of government. We practice and believe free enterprise capitalism. The city does not control what types of businesses come to the city. It's a free enterprise." I would like to remind that council person that their role is to help regulate what businesses come to the city. Not forget.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
May I have one more minute, please?
Counselor? Yes or no? No, no? 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 No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for stopping me.
Citizen comments. Madam Secretary, I have two forms of those, the only two forms for citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Sean Price. Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
So, I don't know if you can, if you have my sheet there, Madam Mayor?
You have a lot of items and you have three minutes and 58 seconds.
Understood. So, but you have it, right?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes and 51.
Thank you for reminding me of my time. So, item six on the agenda here. I'm going to ask that you stop erasing history. Leave it alone. It's disrespectful. Item 10. You force the issue of our water situation by annexing other areas within Texas. You keep annexing, keep annexing, but not ever upgrading the infrastructure. You caused the situation, but it shouldn't cost us anything. You forced that situation upon us. This is your mistake and you should fix it and it should come out of your pocket, not ours. Item 12. Why doesn't, why isn't the healthcare insurance that covers these firemen, why isn't their insurance covering this situation that's described here? Why are we going to buy more or a position or a person to resolve this issue when it's already in their health insurance? And if it's not, why isn't it? Why aren't we looking after our city employees appropriately? Item 13 is, my question is, why and what is this exactly? What are we buying? What are we getting from all this? Because I don't know that Colleen has a railhead. I don't know that we have a large infrastructure for trains and engineering. That's Temple. Item 16 is, I'm just simply going to say, stop spending our money. We don't have anymore. We're already 22 trillion in debt or 32 trillion in debt as a nation. So, in, on item 17, I would say, no. Just stop. Stop spending our money. Our taxes keep going up, but our wages are going down. And I know most here are involved in real estate. They seem to do very well around here. Most people on this board right here do very well and have very nice cars out in the parking lot.
Sir?
And I'm saying, yeah, I'm to my subject, ma'am, about spending.
What a person do for our profession has zero to do with the agenda. Continue, please.
Well, I disagree. Right? So, because of all this stuff with the water pressure and all this annexation, that's all of you guys. You guys set up all this stuff. You're the ones that are benefiting from all this real estate. Y'all are making the money. That's what I'm talking about. So, that's why I have a disagreement with it, ma'am. And with that, I conclude.
Thank you.
And I expect some kind of answer from someone.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and our constituents and fellow council members. Tuesdays are made for people to come in and discuss and talk about what they know. I know as Mayor Protem that when I ran, there were only a couple of things. I want to, I'm going to just make a remark, Mayor. I just got to.
It has to be on the agenda, Mayor Protem.
Rethink this. It's going to be agenda item, dealing with the budget. First, I want to say thank you for doing an excellent job in the budget. It's kind of hard when you, for 34 years, I've been a nurse. And I just have to make this comment. I'm sorry.
It has to be on the agenda. Come on, Mayor Protem.
Okay, I'm going to be good.
We expect residents to follow the open meeting act we do too. Ms. Anka. Good afternoon. You have four minutes.
City Council, this is regarding the marijuana lawsuit. I would like to remind you that with the marijuana ordinance, you voted to punish police officers if they choose to enforce the state law regarding marijuana. And that is concerning. You punish police officers who do their job and you defend individuals who break the law. I am one of those people who have a problem with that. It appears that this council, mayor, and city manager have a problem with following state and federal laws when they are inconvenient to them. Marijuana ordinance is not the only time this council and manager disregard state laws. It seems to be an ongoing pattern. The fact that you show a pattern of disregarding state law when it is not convenient, I think, is relevant in this marijuana lawsuit that you insist on defending against. To make this even more concerning, your staff, with your knowledge, lied to the Colleen Police Department. When a warrant was served with assistance from the police, but staff failed to inform police that the warrant is not signed and it had two different addresses on it and it was illegal. That is lying to law enforcement and it is a crime. The police didn't know they had no authority to be there. And you know exactly what I'm talking about. I sent you an email. I never received a response. But they didn't know that they had no authority to be there because they were lied to. Lying to law enforcement is a crime. So, in summary, you are okay with punishing police officers who do their job and are okay with lying to the police, but you have no problem calling the police whenever you need your own bodyguard, like you did last week. Council members, that is not how you're supposed to treat the police department and I'm going to do whatever I need to do in my power not to allow it. All this disregard of laws adds more evidence against Colleen in the marijuana lawsuit. You demonstrated a history of disregarding state and federal laws. And to be more specific, withholding relevant information from the police, like it happened with the illegal warrant, is obstruction of justice, official oppression, tampering with evidence, violation of Fourth Amendment rights, lying to law enforcement, of course. And you can also be considered an accessory after the fact. And this is what I could think of, and I'm not an attorney. My legal training consists of graduating from police academy 10 years ago. I would like to point out that the county commissioner called Colleen a lawless city. You keep adding to the evidence that he might be correct. Instead of running and hiding, the only thing to do now is to correct the problems. By that, I mean follow federal and state laws at all times, not just when it's convenient. Also, speak truthfully to the police at all times, not just when it's convenient. That is what would make Colleen better. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what case, Chief, I was not talking to you. Chief, do you know anything about the case supposedly somebody lied or, do you know anything about that? Giving falsified evidence to the police? Do you know, Ms. Kay?
Nobody lied. There was a mistake that was made, but I don't think the issue of the dog named Bruce is on the agenda.
Oh, no, sir, it's not. I'm sorry. I just needed some clarification and we're going to follow the guidelines, so that is not on the agenda. Madam Secretary, discuss items for regular city council meeting on September 26, 2023.
Minutes. LM 23023, consider minutes of special city council meeting of September 5, 2023.
Thank you. Resolutions. Counselor, you have two times to speak for five minutes. Madam Secretary?
RS 23144, consider memorandum resolution approving the investment reports for the quarter ended June 30, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Tangellin.
Good afternoon, ma'am, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. In accordance with the Public Funds Investments Act, the city should present a college report for the investments every quarter. And we have Nick Fakari from Meter here today to talk about our investments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Evening. My name is Nick Fakari. I'm not Scott. I'm a part of the Meter team here. I've been working with the city for a little over of a year now. I'm glad I can be here tonight. But to dive in, so we'll just talk high level from the economic standpoint. I know there's a lot going on in the news as of late on where interest rates are moving, how that's going to affect the interest income. The city has ultimately been accustomed to earning. And ultimately, there's still some gray area as far as where interest rates are going to be moving in the short term, we'll call it. However, as we look at the long run projecting through 2024, interest rates are looking like they will be moving lower through the course of this time period. And so ultimately, we have a big meeting coming up with the Fed tomorrow that's going to change some policy rates and some decisions on their horizon here. But ultimately, we do expect interest rates to start moving lower as we've continued to have softening economic data that has rolled in over the prior quarters. Another area that we look at, not just taking the Fed for their word, but ultimately looking at history and these different, what we'd call tightening or interest rate cycles when interest rates are rising, is we monitor the five-year and the two-year treasury, which are evidenced here by the light green and orange lines here. And ultimately, we see as the Fed fund target, the Fed fund target rate, the upper bound, reaches above the two-year and five-year treasury yields. Ultimately, what follows is rate cuts to start creeping into the picture. And so ultimately, as we look and fast forward to where we are here at the end of June, and again, with the Fed funds rate being above the two-year than the five-year treasury currently, and we look at ultimately projections on where interest rates are to be moving, one would suggest that rates would be moving lower here in the relatively short term as well as the long run to get us back to a two and a half level mark. Again, just a thousand-foot view there, but ultimately looking from the quarterly performance here, so overall here from the March 31 of 2023 to June 30 of 2023. You know, a couple of things to focus on here. Balances relatively remain stable for the city over this time. Some seasonal adjustments just unnecessary spending within the pooled investment account there. But ultimately, drawing our attention down to that weighted average maturity and weighted average yield lines. As you can see from the March to June, on the weighted average maturity side of things, the portfolio moving from a 200-day weighted average maturity to a 386-day weighted average maturity, with the weighted average yield moving from a 3.46% up to a 3.79%. So ultimately, we've been trying to protect the city's portfolio to lock into that interest income with the anticipation that interest rates would be moving lower, hence to the weighted average maturity moving longer, as well as the weighted average yield in addition to that, moving in tandem with that. And lastly here, we'll take a look at the overall investment portfolio. And just a few things to point out. I think this is, you know, kudos to the finance team working in tandem with us here is this, the interest earnings from the quarter, interest earned of over 2.2 million with year-to-date interest income over 5.4 million from that standpoint. So, that's, those are real dollars. But ultimately, as we continue to move forward here, we want to do our best to lock in and to increase the maturities that are out in those three- to five-year investment buckets so we can, again, lock into those heightened yields that we're seeing in the marketplace today so the city can hold on to that income and budget for it for many fiscal years to come here in relatively short term. One question that I did receive here prior to the meeting tonight is, obviously, there's a lot of cash built up in that zero to one-year space. And that was really, I'll call it the evolution of the Fed being aggressive in their tightening cycles. So, it was a little bit of a strategy with wanting to keep the maturities inside of that 12-month window. However, since June 30 of 2023, this allocation has changed. Where ultimately, if we were to look at this same distribution as of the end of the month here, just these are from updated numbers, we actually have 14% that would be out in that three-year window maturing, 13% in the four-year, and then 12% in the five-year. So, you can see over the last couple of months, we've been trying to, again, extend the weighted average maturity and to lock into those heightened yields in the portfolio. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you so much for the update.
Absolutely.
Oh, it just came up. I apologize.
Sure.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question initially, I see what the prognosis has been for the last quarter and I saw the previous one. Can you make, I guess not make us comfortable, but what are the projections for this quarter that's ending? Is it, do we see an upturn potentially? And at what point do we start to change our investment strategy?
Sure. So, the investment strategy has continued to evolve since last quarter, again, with a little bit more of a focus on the front end of the yield curve, just based on expectation that there might be some uncertainty as far as how quickly interest rates will be moving lower. And so now there's a little more clarity with that, is that we've hit this top end of this rate tightening cycle, that now it continues to make sense to prolong or extend the portfolio a little longer with the anticipation that interest rates would be moving lower.
Thanks. And I guess, Mr. Kay, the income that we make for that, does that goes to a particular account?
Yes, sir. It goes back to the, so the portion that's allocated, the general fund goes to general fund, and the portion allocated to utility fund goes there. So, it's, they get their percentage, each fund does.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think you kind of answered this because my question is, when you talk about weighted average yield, that's a combination of all our investments like CD, money market, everything that we have. And you say that's obviously gone up higher than in years past because of rates, you know, going up. So, we're getting a better return now?
Yes, sir. That's correct. It's a product of the interest rate environment, but the biggest thing that we're working hard now is to hold on to that income because when rates start to move lower, we want to keep that, you know, 2.2 million quarter over quarter in line.
So, are you saying that, you know, because you mentioned like long-term and short-term, if we invest in the short-term, you know, I don't know how short-term that is, six to 12 months, is those giving us a higher rate of return than the long-term? Because you mentioned, we want to try to lock those long rates in, but if we do that, do we sacrifice the higher yield on the short-term? How does that work?
Yeah. Great question. So, today, for instance, the two-year treasury is over 5% with the five-year right around 4.5%. So, we get into this break-even analysis within the portfolios and when we're looking to allocate to see what makes sense from a reinvestment standpoint or what would it make sense for that matter? But that's why we try to be very diversified in our approach. So, we have regular maturities and we have these investment target buckets from that perspective. So, that helps hedge against some of that downside there.
Okay, yeah. Diversification is always a good thing.
That's right. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
So, in summary, in the next five years predicated on the interest rate, that is the percentage you will be investing?
Say that one more time. I'm sorry.
I said, in summary, predicated on the interest rate, that's how much you will be investing. 20% now, then 15%, 10%, just depending on the.
On the rate environment. Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Our strategy, I know we show this overnight bucket here just to give everybody a glimpse of what's in liquid cash, but we typically try to target from our low cash points for the city to have 80% invested. And that's going to be made up of that zero to five-year securities. And within those different buckets, we're going to shift based upon the economic environment. Yeah, great question.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Have a nice day.
You too, sir, and thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tangellin and your staff. Madam Secretary?
RS 23145, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying a meet-and-confer agreement with the Colleen Police Employee Association, FOP Lodge 32.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Attorney Clemens, good evening, ma'am.
This is the meet-and-confer agreement item. Just a little bit of background, on May 24 of last year, the city council ratified a meet-and-confer agreement with the Colleen Police Employee Association, FOP Lodge 32. The main issue addressed in the agreement was the promotional process. Civil service law provides that promotional positions, other than the position immediately below the chief, are filled solely by written exam, but the agreement allows for a process involving an assessment center as well. The proposed changes to the meet-and-confer agreement provide that the promotional eligibility list would expire one year from the date on which the list is posted rather than the current one year from the date of the test. So, that pushes it out a little bit. And it clarifies that a candidate must complete both the written test and the assessment center to be included on a promotional list for sergeant and lieutenant. It removes the addition of seniority points for the captain position. It allows a candidate access to their own recorded video responses anytime before the eligibility list expires previously. That was just one time. And then it also allows a proctor designated by the lodge to be present in the assessment center. So, those are the changes that were agreed to by the FOP and city representatives. In order for the meet-and-confer agreement to be binding and forcible, the city council must ratify the agreement by majority vote and the police association must ratify, which they have done. They conducted an election and the agreement was ratified by a vote of 172 to 41 that voted in the FOP election. So, the recommendation is that city council ratify the meet-and-confer agreement, and I'm here for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Clemens. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question out of curiosity. Why is it significant for candidates to access their own recorded video response at any time? That's supposed to just one time.
Those, part of the conversation there was just that there were members who had wanted to access those, have more time to be able to see what they did to improve upon what they've done in the past and to learn from that experience.
Got it. Thank you.
I think another one, Councilmember Boyd, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Clemens, it could also be used as a training device for those that do pass their tests to help other officers that may be struggling for those tests. Could that be a factor, Chief Lopez? Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. In most organizations, only the person that is in the process could view their own, you know, response, their video response, because it would be a disadvantage if I look at somebody else's response. So, you use it to prepare for future assessment process if you don't make it, but normally we don't let other candidates review other candidates' video responses.
So, if they pass the test or fail, it's just their video that they can review?
Correct, ma'am. So, they prepare for the next promotional process.
Thank you. Any more questions? Good question, Councilmember Boyd. Madam Secretary, whenever you read. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
RS 23146. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for design of the passenger terminal mechanical improvements project at Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport in the amount of $293,200.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Wilson. How are you, sir?
Good. Good evening, Mayor. Counsel. The item I had before you tonight is a professional service agreement with Garver for the design of the mechanical improvement projects at the Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport. A little bit of background, the bipartisan infrastructure loss signed on November 15th, 2021, provides 15 billion in airport infrastructure grants over a five-year period for airport-related projects. The city has been offered an FAA administration bill, infrastructure grant in the amount of $267,322 to fund 90% of the design services, project administration, and bidding services for the passenger terminal mechanical improvement projects at Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport. Matching funds in the amount of $29,703 will come from the FAA PFC application that was approved by the FAA in February of '23. The project is comprised of various components, including the replacement of the baggage claim carousels and associated belt systems, upgrading the baggage system control hardware and software, replacing the preconditioned air on boarding bridges, one and six, and the replacement of the emergency generator. Because of the grant and the PFC, there's absolutely no impact to the operational fund or fund balance. Staff negotiated professional service agreement with Garver for project administration, design services, bidding services in an amount of $293,200. $263,880 is federally funded. $29,320 is funded by the PFC. Again, no impact to our budget, and Garver is the airport's engineering record and was selected via competitive process. Alternatives, these are your alternatives. And then, of course, recommendations approve the professional services agreement with Garver in the amount of $293,200, and authorize the city manager or is designated to execute all agreements and documents and amendments or actions within the limits set by state and local law, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23147. Consider a memorandum resolution renaming the Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, on this one, before you presented, you and the consultant, Mr. Jeremiah Gerald, is one of the questions is about the history that one of the residents has. Why are we erasing history? And would you please go into detail, one of you, to tell why this has to change? Mr. Wilson?
Well, yes, ma'am. As the council is aware, you know, Fort Cavassus changed their name, Fort Hood changed their name to Fort Cavassus. The airport originally was named Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport because of our connection with Fort Hood. Since Fort Hood no longer exists, this is an opportunity for, for the city to change the name. One of the issues that we've also had historically, and the airport's 19 years old, but I can tell you, is almost every week, we still get one or two phone calls or comments from people that think because the name of the fort is in the airport, that it's a military airport and they can't use it. Or if they know they can use it, they think it's on post, and they have to go through the checkpoints and all that to get on post. So this gives us an opportunity, gives the council an opportunity, if they so desire to correct that issue that we've had, and also come up with a name that reflects the current environment.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for that explanation. The floor is yours, if you want to...
This item is, we're going to do two things. We're going to update the council on the rebranding program to date. And part of that is also, at the end of it, we'll be providing you a recommendation on some of the names to rename the airport. And Mr. Jeremiah Gerald, with ASAM, our consultant, will go through the process that we went through to get us to where we're at today.
Thank you.
Mayor, honorable council members, it's always a pleasure to be here in front of you. This, I get to participate in these amazing projects here, you know, helping to better and move the airport forward, which is, whole purpose of the airport is to serve the community, right? To provide a better access point, a global access point to the entire, for the entire region, not just the city of Colleen. So we've been talking about this rebrand program for many years. It really just came down to, this allowed us to move forward because of the name change from Fort Hood to Fort Cavassus. So I'll take you through the process. So I've done multiple airport rebrand programs in my, in my career. And ultimately, it's a, you know, these are byproducts of air service development efforts at the end of the day, right? Because this is about defining the airport, not just for the local community, but we have to look beyond that. It's about people accessing the region and understand that the name of the airport creates a sense of place, is ultimately what we want to be happening within the name. And it doesn't have to be extravagant. The simpler, the better. I mean, that is our value proposition at the airport today, is simple, easy, travel made easy, your hometown airport. So we can, we can get to a lot of the additional things through the tagline and the marketing messages that will come out of this program. But, but the name itself will give you these two options that we went through this process. Let me, let's go to the first slide, and I'll take you through the process. Oh, I'm sorry. So it's a four-phase process. It's a, you know, we're not just blindly going through the process and pulling names out of the air and that sort of thing. So we start with phase one, which is where we're closing within the next couple of weeks. It's the research phase, and I'll get into some of the details of what that's all about. But we're hearing voices, not just from our focus group, which is a very strategic focus group, we're hearing voices from travelers in the act of travel, we're hearing voices from the major stakeholders across the community, and we're asking these questions, and we're looking for common themes. So that's where we are right now, phase one in the research phase. Once we identify the name, we've already identified platform, promise of the brand, all those elements of the brand have been identified. We're going to move forward to the exciting part, which is the new design elements. So we're going to refresh, hopefully refresh, the logo with the new name. We already have, we kind of got ahead of this a little bit with launching a new website. So there's a lot of different things that we're going to be working on, style guides in that design element piece. But the brand is only as good as, as the guidelines that you, or the restrictions that you put around it, right? To protect it. So we're going to go through this brand implementation process, which will be education for staff on the air, on the airport, not just the staff employed by the city, but the staff that, that work for the airlines and other entities on the airport, to understand what do we represent, what is our value proposition, how do we want to treat people as they come through our facility, because we share these customers. So then we'll finally get to the brand launch, which will be the rollout physically, the visual elements within the airport, but also a marketing campaign to help create that brand awareness throughout the region. It's not just about passengers, it's also about creating brand awareness amongst our targeted airlines that we're trying to get to look at this market in this region. And this region has evolved tremendously. We just had a meeting earlier today, speaking with a low-cost carrier, about this new influx of migration population that's now more than just Fort Cavassus. It's that North Austin movement of all that, all that new population, which is ultimately resulting in additional opportunity to grow here and using GRK as that platform. So let's talk a little bit about phase one. So we've completed the survey portion, we've completed two focus group sessions, which are taking details of those surveys and that feedback that we're getting. We did soft-market research, which is the feedback that we're hearing online, and we also did strategic surveys that have been open to business community, to the stakeholders, and also to the general public, both visitors and local people. So then, at the end of that analysis and that focus group interaction, we, we came up with the defining of the attributes and the challenges, and I'll walk through some of those real quickly with you here in a moment. But then we moved forward to defining the brand platform and the promise, and we'll be, this will be in the brand strategy documents that we'll deliver. Today, we're going to be talking about the name, but that'll be a part of the overall phase one, and then we'll move on to the design elements, as I mentioned before. So getting into some of the research pieces, so we, again, we're not just pulling this out of the air, we're not just asking a handful of people that are biased, we're getting a good cross-section of the community to give us feedback, not just people who live here, but visitors as well. So we did the soft-market research, and I have to tell you, I've done this, how many rebrand? About six rebrand programs since I've been working as a consultant, and I have, it was hard for me to find negative feedback on the experience that passengers are having over the past two years out of Colleen Airport. Everything that I've been finding online, it's very difficult to find something negative. But, but, you know, when we did, we certainly pulled it out and we talked about it, but it just, I think it's just a testament of how the environment at the airport, the passenger experience, they're doing a great job of making that, bringing that to a level that's going to, you know, at least help move traffic in that direction, once we get relevant air service for some of the customers in the region as well. So we completed 41 passenger intercept surveys. Again, that's, we wanted to interview people in the act of travel, whether we're going through the facility, visitors and local people. And then we had over 801 stakeholder surveys that were actually returned. So we used all this information to bring to these two focus group sessions. And these, the members of the focus group, I believe we invited, what's the total, about 13 total entities? And they were strategically invited from different sectors across this region, right? So we got key chamber, key chambers represented, we have the medical sector represented, we have the education, we've got Fort Cavassus, and who am I missing? There's a couple other ones I know. But we, that's the cross-sections that we looked at. We wanted to make sure it was a broad cross-section of multiple feedback within that focus group. So we collected these from June through August, the passenger intercepts. We had about 28% of these were visitors, about 72% were local people. For the stakeholder insights, we collected those for the same period, and we picked up 81. Some of those key survey insights that we were able to derive, the common themes, that's really what we're doing here. We're looking for common themes in these, the feedback that we see online, the feedback that we're getting through the surveys, and then ultimately what the focus group is telling us. So, of course, and a lot of these are obvious, you know, we're not, we're just justifying it with the feedback that we're getting from multiple cross-sections. So the like side of it, close and convenient, easy parking experience, friendly staff, drive, easy access, clean facilities, it was, was very high on the list. And it's just this overall simple process to go through, through the facility, and your travel experience is expedited when you're traveling through GRK. Some of the dislikes were really outside of the control, a lot of these were outside of the control, direct control of the airport when it comes to staffing shortages, flight connections, you know, they want the ability to fly nonstop, even though when you drive to a competitive airport, you're not flying nonstop, you're still connecting, you're just connecting by car. Cancelled, delayed flights, which we've done research around this as well, this is a perception. If you look at the DOT on-time performance percentages, we rank the highest of the airports in the region as far as on-time percentage of flights, departures. And then certainly, airline and flight options limited, inconsistent customer service, and expensive fares. Certainly, when we talk about fares, if we compare Apples to Apples, which is the American service that we have today, to the American service out of Austin, they actually, the fares are actually very similar. Of course, where the difference is, is when we bring in, you know, the low-cost carrier options out of the Austin market, and that's what we're looking to remedy through this process in Colleen, bring in one of those ULCCs. So just running through these attributes really quickly, it is an attribute to have such a large, you know, presence with a military base like Fort Cavassus, right? That's a built-in incubator for many, many different things, certainly population growth. And we see that, and of course, that directly ties into air travel. It's close to home, we have short flights to these hubs where you can connect globally, easy connections when you get to DFW, cheap parking or value parking, I probably shouldn't use the word cheap, it's value parking, close-in parking, competitive fares, cost-effective, short drive time, small terminal, you get, you get the idea of the attributes. And then some of the challenges, certainly around air carrier options, limited schedule, can't be perceived unreliable service, image of customer service could be poor in some instances if you have a, an issue with an airline, for the most part, is what we're talking about here. We, no clear identity established. I think we're going to remedy that through this process. Some of the things like website, we've already moved ahead and started the process of clearing that up, using that as a vehicle to get our message across, that what, what Mr. Wilson was talking about, I've heard that from the moment I stepped foot in Colleen. This is a, we're confused, is this a military airport, or is this a general public airport? Can I book a flight? Can I fly out of here? We have a lot of transient traffic, where we have to re-educate these customers as they come in, when, because that Fort Hood is in the name of the airport. So also the improved ground access to Austin, Austin over the past couple of years, and then those continuous expansion, new, new air service options that are being added at Austin on a regular basis. So some of the core values that we uncovered for the airport, and these have actually added, been added to and shifted a little bit since our last focus group session, but these do cover some of the key things. It's user-friendly, you can see all those things that make up that core value. We're cost-effective in the fact that if you look at the overall value of flying from the airport, not just the airfare, if you look at the time on the road, if you look at the gas that you burn in a car, so on and so forth, and if you have to, certainly if you have to pay for a hotel room when you, when you get somewhere to fly out, it's certainly much more cost-effective to fly out of GRK. Flyer-friendly, we've got one major carrier, again, we talked about one-stop global access. And then positioned to serve this growing economic hub, you know, if we could have put North Austin in the name of the airport, we would have done it, because that's ultimately what's happening. Everything is this population base is pushing further and further into the Colleen catchment area. And, and of course, our position in Central Texas. So the proposed names, you know, again, so these proposed names came from the, we asked that question point-blank from the people that we surveyed, we asked the focus group as well, and most of the answers came down to the simplest form. You know, we certainly recommended, hey, you know, certainly we want to identify sense of place through the name Colleen, right? The city of Colleen. What we really liked and what we supported was, you know, on the one that was recommended by the focus group, was the greater piece. Because, again, we're positioning ourselves to serve the greater region, not just the city of Colleen. We're also looking forward into the future to advertise ourselves and to market ourselves as that growing metropolis north of Austin that'll be an entry point for many visiting this region as well as Austin as we move into the future. So adding something as simple as the term Greater Colleen Regional Airport was ultimately what the, the focus group decided on. We had a lot of people that said, hey, keep it simple, Colleen Regional Airport. We had several recommendations for actual names, few and far between, but certainly, again, we go back to creating a sense of place, and we have to think more about what is the purpose of the airport, what are we trying to do in the name of the airport, who are we trying to attract? And it's more than just the local people, right? We serve a large group of people, ultimately globally for this region. So these are the two main names, and with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Wilson to complete the end of this process.
Thank you, Jeremiah. So the alternatives we have before us tonight is do not change the name. There's no rule, no law that says we have to change it, so we have the option not to change the name. We can select the name that was recommended by the focus group, or we can select another name. Alternant two is recommended, because based off the surveys, results of the surveys and the deliberations of the focus groups that Jeremiah just discussed, alternant two reflected the recommendations of the community, but also represents our preliminary brand strategy of reaching outside the limits of the city. One of the things to remember is a large portion of our passengers, if not maybe more so, come from outside the city limits. So that was one of the reasons about adding the name Greater. So the recommendation from the staff is that the council change the name of Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport to the Greater Colleen Regional Airport, as recommended by the focus group. Just to reiterate what Mr. Gerald said, the, the name of Colleen Regional Airport was the overwhelming favorite of the surveys we got, but based off the considerations of the focus group, the recommendation was the Greater Colleen Regional Airport. And we would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Allen.
First course, thank you.
Thanks, Walden.
What you did, except for the discussion that, about North Austin and Austin in general, when people land here, we want them to stay here.
That's why I mixed that one, sir.
What, if you could speak on it, what was the general view of the, the garrison and the installation about changing the name?
We have had several conversations going all the way back to Colonel Foster, and also a conversation with other Fort Hood folks, and we've not received any negative remarks or comments. I think they fully understand what we're doing and are supportive of it.
Yeah. And I can see, because you and I have had this discussion, and I've heard people think that Robert Gray on the airfield and GRK are one and the same.
Yes.
Be nice if we had a Space A carrier here, because I definitely would use it to go Space A travel. But I, I think the direction that you guys are going on is, is perfect, especially with some of the future plans that you already have. some of the future plans that you already have, and thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Good evening, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, sir.
Just going to chime in real quick. Before I share my opinion, I do want to thank everyone who participated in this process, and for the focus group who presented two great options, in my opinion. I personally feel that the Greater Colleen Regional Airport is a bit redundant, whereas you have regional and Greater Colleen. The other concern I have is people may not know the absolute location of the airport. If we say Greater Colleen, might be preceded, might be in the suburbs, not suburbs rather, but Harker Heights or Carpers Cove, but where exactly? I like Colleen Regional Airport because it's the most clear and concise, and it's easiest to reference, in my opinion. I personally think, after we undergo a larger airport expansion, maybe that's the best time to add Greater to it, but to be clear and concise or simple as you guys put in the presentation, that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Segal.
Thank you, Mayor. First though, I think, I want to just clarify, I think you, you mentioned option two. Option two in our slides is Colleen Regional Airport. Option one, or number one says Greater Colleen Regional Airport.
I'm sorry, it was the, it was in the recommendation slide that I was referencing.
Oh, okay, because, yeah, and ours has got it backwards. But, no, I like it. I think that, the only thing is, you know how we got the airport code, and the airport code is what, GRK? And is that going to remain, because Greater Colleen Regional Airport would be GKR? I don't think it ever matched before anyways, I don't think it's going to matter.
Well, it's important to remember that, especially in our case, the three-letter identifier, the GRK that you're referencing, has nothing to do with Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport. That is the identifier of the Robert Gray Army Airfield. And so since we don't own the airfield and we're just a tenant of Fort Cavassus, the GRK will never change. That's going to stay the same. So that has, that is a reference to the airfield and not the airport.
No, and that's a good thing, because that way, nobody gets confused, you know? Even though name change, people are still going to research, there's so many websites out there that are going to continue to use that. But, yeah, I just want to say, I know this has been a long process, especially with the branding, because I know that with the new name change, it's exciting to see that branding come about, the logo and the marketing that's going to be done. But I agree, I think that a lot of people outside the immediate area of Colleen identify Colleen Fort Hood Military. And so removing that Fort Hood, I think will help, because, you know, I talked to people, I said, why don't you fly out of Colleen? I thought it was military, I didn't know I can get in there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, it's, what is it, joint use? So I commend you, and I'm, I'm in favor of going with what the recommendation was, because there's a lot more people there than, than me, myself, so I'll go with that, and, you know, all the work that you've done and everybody's done, and thank for our company that we hired to help us brand it, and hopefully attract, you know, another airline. I know we've been working hard on that too, and so hopefully that'll go a long way towards that, so.
Like Mr. Gerald mentioned, we're, we're working hard every day. In fact, we had a conversation with an airline that has some interest, just this afternoon, a few hours ago, in fact, so we're, we're working hard to try to make that happen.
And, and, and I don't know if this, we're talking about the airport, but I know that back a while back, I think it was last year, the council had, did some kind of grant to try to, try to, is that still in play?
It is, sir, yes, sir. You're talking about the small, the Small Community Air Service Development Grant?
Yes, yes.
Yes, in fact, that was one of the issues that we brought up today. We still have that in play.
Okay, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Segar. We'll now move with Mrs. Gonzalez, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. I share the same sentiment. We're really excited about the work that you all have been putting forward in making, you know, these modifications. We know it's a good thing for the city overall, and the branding with our regional effort, I think is also a good thing. I just wanted to just go on the record for a few constituents. We have a frequent flyer who is, actually wheels up right now, who wanted to be here to say thank you. She's very pleased with our airport. Again, all the likes and the feedback was consistent with what she had to say with regards to her travels, and she does use the airport a lot. And so she's very pleased with what we've got going on. And so it's also nice to hear from the people, I know we trust what you guys are saying, but to hear from people that are actually using the airport day in and day out, who also have that same sentiment. So I just wanted to go on the record and say that they hear you, she's excited, and we thank you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I want to, first of all, commend to what y'all are doing out there. I had a chance to tour that airport, and it was, I was just so impressed for what y'all are doing, and even with the, the budgeting and finding grants to do what you do out there. I just want to commend everyone out there. It's a good atmosphere out there, it's a good airport, just so impressed with that. Let me ask you, Mr. Wilson, how long will it take, once the name has been picked and we agree on the name, how long will it take to officially brand that airport a different name?
When you and I had that conversation a few weeks ago, and when I originally briefed the council several months ago on this, when we started, I had indicated that the FAA had told me that it was an eight to twelve-month process. I recently found out that because we're not changing the name of the airfield or the identifier, all we're doing is changing our name, that it will be about a forty-five to sixty-day process. Once the, once the council selects a name and, and signs off on a resolution, I will submit that to the FAA, and I've been told forty-five to sixty days it should be official.
That's great, that's great. Thank you again for what you told me.
Now, if we were to Mr. Segar's comment, if we were changing the GRK part of it, you're looking at about a year to a year and a half, but because we're just changing the name, it's a very simple process.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Solomon. Councilman Adams, this is your second, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton. I just, about the code, real quick, just for edification, that's like changing your DNA too, isn't it? You can't, I know when you were talking, you can't, it's kind of like pulling teeth to.
It can, it can be done, but it's not a very simple process.
Okay, and that's really basic, and even if we were to build our own tower, that's the only way that, which I know.
The only way we would change that is if we built our own airport.
Right.
You know, then we would, yeah, that's not going to happen, but as long as, I don't see the GRK part ever changing.
Yeah, then I, I will say that I do anticipate us changing the name again as we grow, maybe if we have a second international airport in the, in the area. The surveys that you did in the focus groups, do you intend to continue to do those after this, we make this election?
I'm going to defer to Jeremiah.
Yeah, I mean, as a part of the program going forward, we want to continue to get feedback from customers, so it'll be built in. We actually have a, a page hidden on the website right now that we will open eventually, which will allow not only customers to give us feedback, you know, on their direct experience of the airport, but also to give us feedback on individuals who've gone above and beyond to help them, because we want to create that environment of rewarding people for doing that, so that'll be something you'll see in the near future.
And I know I've traveled, last year, National League of Cities, we did a mobility thing, and they took us through the airport and some of their intermodal travel. And I noticed in some of the other places I've gone to, the airports have apps, and I know that can facilitate the survey or maybe more people survey, I don't know if that's something in the cards in the future.
Yeah, there's ways that we can do it through a mobile version of our website, you know, as opposed to creating just a, a completely separate app.
Jeremiah, could you speak into the mic? People online can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, something similar to an app through the mobile version of the website, certainly a simplified version. I don't know if you've seen any of the marketing that we're doing, but we're, we're doing landing pages, you know, so there's unique landing pages that we can create for, for specific messaging, something similar to that, I think would be the angle to go, as far as a customer service-oriented, you know, tool to use is what you're referring to, we could do it through that, certainly.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good evening. You all know the airport is a big thing for me. I love going out there, I love coming out in the middle of the day, having lunch and dinner, but what's most important to me is that we have such a wonderful staff who takes the time to make it kind and nice and comfortable for everyone. The name, the first name is okay, I go with it, Greater Colleen Regional Airport. Thank you. I, I do have a question. Who was on your focal group? What did your focal group consist of? Who did, what were the persons?
What were the groups, what organizations, the units?
Yes, ma'am. We had several Chamber of Commerce's. We had the Colleen Chamber Commerce, the Harker Heights Chamber Commerce, Lato Chamber Commerce, we had Texas A&amp;M, CTC, Central Texas, we had Advent Hospital, we had Fort Cavassus, and we also had the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance represented.
Okay, so it was a broad spectrum that represented our community. Did we have laypersons or persons that just within the community?
No, ma'am, but the, the folks that responded to the surveys, that's where we reached out for those type of opinions. Those surveys were sent out not only to the council members, but were sent out to all the Chamber of Commerce's in the area that I just mentioned, and we asked them to submit those to their membership. And so that was where we came up with the layperson comments, as well as, I call them the man on the street, he calls them intercept surveys, but where we actually went into the whole rooms and into the, the food court, and we began to ask folks for their opinion to fill out the form. And so, yes, we did get some, some of the, some of the, I hate to use the word layperson, but just the regular folks' opinion.
Well, that's so important, because regular people are good people and have good decisions also, so thank you for your service.
Yes, ma'am, that's why we went through this process. We needed to do a rebranding, but it was important to us to make sure that we just didn't jump into this thing, that we reached out to a broad cross-section of the community and tried to get as much input as we could. Obviously, you can't ask everybody, but, you know, we, I think we did a very good job of, of reaching out and getting diverse opinions.
Excellent job, airport staff. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question related to signage, understanding that it may be forty-five to sixty days before we go live with the new name, how soon might Tech Dot be able to replace the signs across the state highway?
I have not had that conversation with them directly yet. I was reached out a few weeks ago by a consultant for Tech Dot, or that was working with Tech Dot, that said they were ready to go up and put up a sign that said, Colleen Fort Cavassus Airport, and they were ready to hang it. And so I told them they might want to hold off on that a little bit, so I'm assuming they'd be ready to move pretty quick, but I've not had that direct conversation with them yet.
Okay, thank you.
Up until just a few days ago, I was still under the impression we were looking at an eight to twelve-month process, so.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, one thing on that, so the signage plan will come with the phase three, we're going to lay out a signage plan, which will be, you know, that'll take time, I think, there's a lot of things out there. If we change the logo and that sort of thing, and we recommend to do that, we got to be strategic about how we do it, because obviously there's a big cost to doing that in a short period of time for the airport. So, but that, that's coming in the phase though, and we'll share that with you guys as well.
Sure, thank you.
My, my response, sir, was to the Tech Dot portion of it. The, Jeremiah is right, the, the other signage that we would do would take a little while longer when we, when we get into, further into the branding, but the Tech Bot, Tech Dot portion was what I was referring to.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Jeremiah. One of the things that I like about this idea was a part of our comprehensive plan, and it's all about the city of Colleen and our own identity. On that survey, a lot of residents wanted us to have our own. We are big supporters of Fort Cavassus, and like you say, we are tenants on their property, and that, that working with them and meeting with other mayors and the general, Bernard B., some of the things is about how we work so well together as a partner, and this right here shows that we respect them and they respect us. So I'm really for the comprehensive plan, and just naming it, Colleen Regional Airport, I think Councilmember Boyd made a mention of that, just to have our own identity without the Greater, just keep it simple.
Just, just so you'll know, I could, I could, I could support either recommendation. The majority of the opinion was keep it simple, Colleen Regional Airport. The Greater part was a nod to the fact that we do reach folks outside the city limits, but as your director, I could support either choice.
Yes, sir, I just like the word Colleen first, just, just lining up the comprehensive plan. Thank you for that. There are no more questions, so I will see you next week, sir. Thank you both. Madam Secretary.
RS 23148, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2344 for the terminal demolition project at Skylark Field Airport to R&amp;L Global Incorporated in an amount of
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, ma'am. Again, this, this item is the demolition of the old Skylark Terminal Building. Just a little bit of background, the previous airline terminal building at Skylark Field is forty-four years old and has been vacant for the past nineteen years. Numerous attempts to repurpose the building have failed, due in part to the size, configuration, and the overall condition of the interior. Also, recent storm damage has caused a portion of the exterior walls and a portion of roof to collapse, rendering it unentertable and structurally unsafe. Also, the Skylark master plan that was adopted in October of 2016 calls for the demolition of the terminal to make way for future aviation development. The project will consist primarily of the demolition of the existing old terminal building. The funding of this project will come from the Aviation Capital Improvement Fund. The terminal demolition project was advertised on August sixth and August thirteenth. Advertising appeared in the local newspaper as well as the city's website. Additionally, it was advertised on multiple statewide electronic bidding sites. Bids were opened on August twenty-third, 2023, we had six bids received, and as you can see, the bids are there. Staff reviewed the bid packages and found that R&amp;L Global Incorporated to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. We did review references from them as well. Staff's recommending that the contract be awarded to R&amp;L Global Incorporated based on the bid price and price offered, on the bid and price offered. Includes base bid, alternate one, base bid and alternate one, the contract amount is Project will be funded by the Aviation Capital Improvement Fund, and these are your alternatives. And our recommendation is to approve the contract with R&amp;L Global for the base bid and alternate one in the amount of $157,094, and authorize the city manager or designated to execute all contract documents and any change orders allowed by state and local law, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Two brief and very relevant questions. What is the timeline for the demolition process to begin and for completion?
I'm not sure I can answer that right at the moment. The discussion we had with them was that they thought they could start very quickly. I'm not sure what the definition of quickly is, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you for that. Other question, what is the future plan for the existing demolition site?
The, to market it.
To market it.
I will tell you that in the past, we have had, in fact, right before COVID, we had some investors that came out that we were visiting with, that were very interested in building different types of hangars, T-hangers, box hangars. One of the ideas was also to build, maybe not quite as big, but a CSI-sized hangar there in that location, and market it to some type of aviation maintenance and FBO-type facility where they do flight instruction, aircraft maintenance, maybe even avionics. Right now, I have no, no, nobody inked for it, but that would, it's hard when people come in and look at your site and they see a big, large building there, and you say, well, we could knock that down and build your building there. Well, it's a lot easier to market it if you've already got the slate clean, and that's what we're attempting to do. The building has no value, in fact, it's a safety hazard now. It's more valuable to me or to us as a blank canvas to market than it is the way it's standing now.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Proton. Mr. Wilson, I love the idea of knocking an old building that's not going to make any money down, that's pretty good. But I also love the idea of having the individual hangars, and if we have those individual hangars, when we're having those private flights come through, it would be nice to have a little eatery there too. You know, I've been trying to get golf course, and now I'm on the hangar, the new spot when the hangars are coming in, and I know it's hard with the schedules and knowing when people are going to be there, but I think it would be a need to. I just wanted to add that on.
That's a great idea. First thing you got to do is you got to get activity at the airport, and, you know, adding, adding commercial hangars and business is like that, is, you know, we've done, recently we added the, the Skydivers, which was a good step forward. Having another business in this location would be another step toward doing what we really want to do with Skylark, which is grow it into a full-use active airport for the city.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Any more questions for Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, when the demolition starts, if it's passed next week by the council, will a notice go out to the public about demolition? Will it be a lot of noise or not, or it's just going to?
No, ma'am. We've already notified the tenants, the folks that operate on the airfield. But there's no plans at this point to notify anybody, because it's not like we're using explosives or anything like that. It'll be taken down very carefully.
All right. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS 23149, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the agreement with the Waste Management Incorporated for the disposal of the city's municipal solid waste.
Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Council, city manager, city attorney. As we all know, we have a, we don't have an active landfill here in the city of Kaleen. We have a transfer station, which means we transport our waste to an active landfill in Temple. This agreement here is to further that with our waste management, okay? So, the Clean Transfer Station process is well over 130,000 tons of municipal solid waste annually. On October 8th of 2015, the city of Kaleen entered into an agreement for disposal services for the city's municipal solid waste with Waste Management. That agreement was extended, amended, and extended on September 1st of 2020. Waste Management oversees the landfills in Temple, as well as the Williamson landfill, Williamsburg County, in case we need to use that when they manage that as well. The agreement that we have before you is with Waste Management for a period of five years, and will provide disposal for the city's MSW at Temple or Williamsburg County landfill via Waste Management. We have two alternatives here tonight. And we, staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or his designated to execute the disposal agreement with Waste Management for the disposal of the city's municipal solid waste for the duration of this five-year period. Keeping in mind that we've been with Waste Management since 2008. We've had a phenomenal relationship with that company, and we want to extend that now for another five-year period. And with that being said, I'm entertaining the questions we have.
There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
RS 23150, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the agreement with Kamal Transportation LLC for transportation of the city's municipal solid waste.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am. These contracts currently, as stated before, we have to transport that, the waste to the landfill. So, this agreement will be with Kamal. We've been with Kamal since 2008 as well. They are the primary provider for this. We did go out this year to see if there was other providers, just for transparency purposes, and make sure that we was getting the best value for our dollar for the citizens here in the city of Kaleen. That, the two quotes we got, one was from Kamal, one was from Mr. Bolts Inc. As we reviewed and analyzed those quotes, Kamal was the only responsible, responded to that, to those quotes. So, Kamal was selected, and for the transportation, we actually are looking to go into agreement with them for the same period of five years, running concurrently with the Waste Management agreement. As you can see, over the years, starting back in 2015, when we brought the last agreement to you, our municipal waste has gone up, the tonnage has gone up. This right here just illustrates how the city is growing and expanding and the need for this service at the transfer station. We have two alternatives. And staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or his designated to execute the transportation agreement with Kamal Transportation LLC for the transportation of the city's municipal solid waste for a duration of five years. And I'm here to answer any question you may have.
Mr. Reynolds, there are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23151, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number 2341 wastewater improvements for Chaparral Road Project to Oregio Corporation with a contract in the amount of $2,229,604.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am. All right, a little background. This is a project that is in our 2019 water and wastewater master plan. As you know, the master plan is basically our roadmap to future growth and expansion of projects, rehab of projects that we currently have. So, this is where this come out of the project. And there is noted as Project 7S. And it's the construction of a sewer line enforcement north of Chaparral Road and west of Shremir Road. The completion of this project will bring sewer services to the area, and it's also critical for the construction of our EOC fire station that we're going to be building out there. That's also ARPA funding, is funding that project. So, this is going to be, it's critical to having this out there as we get ready to build, go out to do construction on that project next year. On August 10th of 2023, two bids will receive from the following vendors, Guohe Corporation, and as well as Bell Contractors. And the Guohe Corporation is the selected vendor for the bid for the wastewater improvements for Chaparral Road, based on performance and the best value of the city. We have two alternatives. And the staff recommends that the city council authorize the award of bid number 2341 wastewater improvements for Chaparral Road Project to Guohe Corporation. Authorize the city manager or his designated to execute construction contract in the amount of $2,729,604 with Guohe Corporation, and furthermore, authorize the city manager or designated to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. I'm here to answer any questions. I have my water and sewer director here, Mr. Steve Kine, as well, if you have any questions.
Mayor Proton.
Great job, Mr. Reynolds. Seem like it's big money in Waste Management. But what I, my question is, those persons who are in the area, will Septic still be a part of this system in that it will be?
It will be.
I just want to be for sure.
That's an option.
It's an option.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the option, will the city take on that revenue? I just want constituents who are out there listening before they call you on tomorrow about their Septic and about what's going on. Will it be a part? Will the city have like a buyback plan where you can get on the city water, city of Waste Management? What's the?
When did our last Septic elimination program? What were you, Steve? About four years ago. That's not what this project is addressing. This project is creating the availability for the city to grow in that direction, which we are growing that direction right now. It's a desolate area out there. It's going to provide sewer services for future development and growth out there. So, yes, we can look at those things down the line, ma'am, but this right now is just providing that main line for that service.
And that's what I wanted to hear. I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that. Us understanding and them calling you tomorrow is going to be a totally different story. So, thank you very much. Always a great job. So, thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Reynolds. Similar question to the last one I asked relating to the timeline of construction.
Yes, sir. So, we have gone out for a bid on this project. So, we're ready to move forward, like as soon as we get this approved, I think. Yes, Steve and his, and the team are ready to move forward as soon as we get this approved, sir. Guohe Corporation is ready to move forward within the next thirty to sixty days.
Okay, what, how long is the construction process for something like this?
What did they give us on it? Was it fifteen or eighteen? It was fifteen months. I don't know if it was fifteen or eighteen. It was fifteen months on this one, sir. So, it should be done by the time we get the EOC done, for sure. It's also going to provide sewer for that whole area out there.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last, Poltergeist. I think it was last week or the week before that we drew the bid for the pump station. Was it the pump station or lift station?
Pump station.
Pump station. What effect does this one have on that process? Completely separate, correct?
We're talking water, and this is actually wastewater.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Madam Secretary.
RS 23152, consider a memorandum resolution to approve an interlocal mutual aid agreement between the cities of Kaleen and Nolanville for fire department services.
Councilmember Adams, okay, he moved that. Good evening, Chief Kabinski.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This agreement, a little bit of background, our mutual aid agreements throughout the county supply fire services with additional resources when a single or multiple incidents deplete all the resources from either of the entities. And they are legal documents, which in writing, set the conditions under which all the entities that are part of the agreement operate. In addition, this agreement outlines some joint training, communications, initial dispatch response, and some other guidelines for borrowing or lending equipment within the agreement for either entity. Impact of this agreement is minimal, but it's not measurable when we talk about fuel that's used when you drive from one city to another. The expenditure is recurring. It's budgeted within the utilization of our current existing response structure that the Clean Fire Department has for our 24/7 staffing model for our fire and EMS units. This is with the city of Nolanville. The agreement will allow us to provide them with either an engine or a brush truck in the event of a confirmed structure fire. This also results in the use of ambulance service for multiple calls if the other agencies surrounding are not available, or mass casualty incidents, large-scale, multiple victim incidents, and vice versa. The city of Nolanville would be responding and giving us the same, either a fire engine into the city limits or most likely change of quarters. Most of the time, our fires are able to be handled by all the units we have available. They would come in and cover a station that's responding to a fire and out of district or out of service for three, four hours as they're handling the incident. And Nolanville would come in and sit in our quarters and then respond to calls to our citizens that are needed, so we don't have any gap in coverage or delayed responses. With regards to EMS service, they have secured an EMS provider and have a contract with that, so that is city ambulance. It's a private contractor, which is something would be new to the city. We typically don't have a private EMS service that comes into our area, but it does reap a, give us a benefit in the fact that we have another ambulance that's advanced life support that is available to come into the city during our high-usage times or times that we would run out of EMS units. And that does happen occasionally. So, our alternatives are to either enter into or not enter into the agreement, and our recommendation is to enter into the agreement with the Nolanville Fire Department, which goes operational on October 1st of this year.
Thank you, Chief. And that is what makes Central Texas so unique. All of our cities working together as a partner, doing good times and bad. So, that's great. Any questions? Yeah. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You had already answered one of my questions with the operational data of their new fire department. Are they, they're not fully mission, are they fully mission capable on October 1st? Or are they just like initially mission capable?
Chief Cunningham from the Nolanville Fire Department emailed and updated us today that they will be fully operational with a engine, a brush truck, and an ambulance, and as well as a chief officer, the chief's vehicle, on October 1st.
Okay, thanks. I mean, Nolanville is smaller, so there's, there is going to be a, the response from us will be bigger than it would be from them. But I'm just curious if they, I knew they had some issues with their previous volunteer, and I just didn't see the, an update on that. Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Sagav.
Chief, is the Nolanville Fire Chief here?
He is not. He is at his city.
I didn't know if that was him or not. I said, that sure looks like him.
The Nolanville Fire Chief is a retired Kaleen firefighter captain who's newly appointed there. And again, this is a new agency. It's new for the city of Nolanville and the city of Nolanville residents. The Central Bell Fire Rescue Agency still exists. They're just going to be handling the non-incorporated areas around.
No, and, you know, we're glad to have him as a neighbor. They do great things. And is their fire department, is it still like volunteer, or did?
No, this model, the Nolanville Fire Department model, is a full-time paid fire chief. And then they have, I want to say it's either eighteen or twenty-four part-time firefighters, who, quite honestly, a number will be Kaleen firefighters who are going to work on their day off to make a little extra money. Temple, Belton, very confident that the bulk of the firefighters that are going to be there are going to be coming from other full-time fire departments in the surrounding area, which is of some comfort to us, because we know that the training that they're expected to maintain is going to be one that when they come into the city of Kaleen, we're going to get a, and this is not a slight on our volunteers, but their training requirements are a little bit different. So, we know that we're going to be getting professional firefighters coming in, even though they're a part-time agency.
Awesome. That's good. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Chief. Grateful to support our neighbors out in Nolanville. Is this our first interlocal agreement with the city of Nolanville?
That I'm aware of for the fire services, yes.
Fire service, okay. Thank you.
And that's what makes them unique. I agree with you, Councilmember Boyd. Anybody else? Mayor Proton.
Chief, it may be your first agreement, but you've worked with Nolanville before. You work with them constantly, don't you?
Not the city of Nolanville. Central Bell Fire and Rescue is the agency that previously serviced the city of Nolanville, and so we have worked with that agency. And we will continue to work with them, just not within the city limits.
Okay, I just wanted to understand it. Okay, thank you.
I'm proud of Kaleen. Thank you, Chief. Madam Secretary.
RS 23153, consider a memorandum resolution to award RFQ 2329 Fire Department Mental Health Clinician to A&amp;L Solutions in the amount of $45,000 annually.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And Chief, one of the questions by the residents, I don't know if you will be able to answer that. This was why that the social worker is not already a part of your mental health, I should say, not the social worker, part of your insurance plan? And why, I know we use ARPA funding to assist with this, but why do we have to use funds outside when it should be added to your insurance?
I believe the presentation will answer that, and then I can expand a little bit more if that works for you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure that I get that question out there. Thank you, Chief.
And as we get started, before I go into the background, with me today is Fire Rescue Officer Matt Sandoval, Brianna Wildung, Deputy Chief Doug Foster, who are part of our peer support team for the fire department. They worked on this RFQ, as well as Dr. Alton, who is from A&amp;L Solutions, who is the primary, the principal for the selected firm. As you know, City Council directed use of ARPA funds for our firefighter mental health and wellness initiatives to help combat this increasing problem. Just this last weekend, I was in Colorado Springs to put Fire Rescue Officer Patrick Bergman's name on the fallen firefighter wall. And 572 names were read. Some are legacy, previous line of duty. And 200 were from 2021, and roughly 200 from 2022. The firefighter line of duty deaths, and I'm expanding a little bit here, are not the heroic things that you see on TV where things are in fire. The highest deaths are cancer and suicide. And suicide is climbing. We are seeing suicide deaths in firefighters increasing year over year. So, this is, thank you to City Council for making this a priority, as it's something that hits home to us. Our fire department's peer support team, and I'm very proud of them, put this together, and I tasked them with something that they've never done before, write an RFQ for a mental health clinician to be available to our firefighters 24/7. So, again, I have to give them a whole lot of the credit. They built the RFQ, and some of the things that were important to them is that the clinician be available 24/7, which is something that our insurance is not. You have to make an appointment. So, we do have insurance that is available to our firefighters for mental health services through routine insurance. But we know that what they see and what they go through doesn't happen Monday through Friday, eight to five. And sometimes you have to wait three, four weeks to see a good clinician. This is something that's available 24/7. This allows for immediate treatment by a trained behavioral health specialist, and that is to any Clean Fire Department member who's struggling from the mental stresses of our profession, which are an endless list. of our profession, which are an endless list. Some of the qualifications and items specific to the unique needs of the fire service were created by the team, and there were two vendors who submitted proposals to the team, with one vendor who met all of the requirements that were set forth in the RFQ. The second vendor was really only an online resource 24/7, as opposed to a live, in-person clinician. Our ARPA funding will be utilized for the contract through December 31st, 2024, which is the deadline for use of ARPA funds for this type of a service. The remaining contract period and any further extensions will be funded through our fire department operating budget. The annual cost is $45,000. And so you see the breakdown there. ARPA funds spent through the end of the performance period will be about $56,000, and our FY '25 operating budget, because it's, it's split in the middle of the fiscal year, would be $33,750. And then the remaining years would be $45,000 a year, for a total of $225,000 on a five-year contract. Services provided: this is direct counseling to members of the Clean Fire Department during times of crisis in response to traumatic incidents. There are 16 hours reserved monthly that a clinician would be onsite, available at the fire department in a private room. We have a number of fire stations that have clinic rooms already built into them, next to the community rooms. And that will allow anybody, for whatever reason, if they want to come in and talk to a clinician, they're struggling through paramedic school, they have the ability to just have contact with a clinician who can provide them a little bit more in-depth than what our peer support team does. They will coordinate escalating mental health services, and also provide clinical oversight to the peer support team. These team members behind me here, these are just a few, they will help this team develop curriculum and training. Our peer support team members are the first line of defense. They're the trusted individuals who we are in shoulder-to-shoulder with when we see the things that we do. And so they're available 24/7, 365, and there are about 10 of our peer support team members. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Eight.
Eight. We have eight peer support team members on the department. Those are the trusted individuals. That peer support team has been up and running for a number of years now, and I get an update. We don't get names. We don't get problems. We just get information from the team that say, five of our members reached out to us, three just needed to talk to, we said needed to seek additional help. This is now going to be that additional help, because the peer support team just said, "Well, go find a mental health provider." They gave them some, some options and references, but really, we didn't have that second piece to then add into the third piece of long-term care that might be needed through your health insurance. One of the things that's very unique is this person has to be available for escalated care following critical incidents and critical incident debriefings within 24 to 72 hours after a critical incident. They also, unique, complete 72 hours of ride-along field intern time inside an active Clean Fire Station. We can't expect a mental health provider to understand what it is we do and how we do it unless they actually sit at the dinner table, right in the back of the ambulance at 3:00 in the morning, ride on a fire engine, hear all the sounds and the things that are going on, before you even show up to that critical incident. So the expectation will be that they would complete that ride time sometime between now and December 31st of this year. We're going to prefer 24-hour increments, but actually at least mandate that there's a day shift and a night shift, that they get the overnight part, so if they break it up into 12-hour increments, that'll be fine. And this is going to be required for all current and future counselors that are going to have contact with KFD personnel. Again, the impact, the expenditure we talked about, it would be coming out of our ARPA account, and then professional services account thereafter. We have the alternatives, and of course, our recommendation is to authorize the purchase of the A&amp;L Solutions contract and provide the mental health services for the Clean Fire Department firefighters. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Proton.
I get excited. I get excited when I know that the people who are taking care of us are being taken care of. So it means a lot that even, it's 40, I don't know how you're going to work it with $45,000, but when you have a person to come in and take, take care of families, mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters after a lone day, day of work, then you've done the most. So I'm just so happy about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fact is, you know, our firefighters and paramedics see things that I couldn't imagine being subject to, just like our police officers, you know, and America's military. I just wanted to also say, I think this is one of the best allocations of ARPA dollars that this council made, addressing mental health. In the presentation, it listed that the allocation will provide a trained mental health team that will be available 24 hours a day for seven days a week, that will allow for immediate treatment by a trained professional for any KFD member who is struggling for mental health in this profession. Again, this is great. I'm excited about it. This was asked for, and we were able to provide it. Thank you.
Well said. Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to say thank you. One of the things I could never, you know, really understand is how you guys do that. And those of us that serve in the military, you know, I always think about that, you know, because a lot of times, we see an incident in the military, not to take anything away from that, but you guys sometimes see those incidents every day. And, you know, we get, come back and we're traumatized, you know, for, for the rest of our lives. And so I don't know how you guys do that, that you're able to go out there and see some, sometimes terrible things, you know, with car accidents and, and young, you know, kids and everything, and then come back and do your job and keep going. So I think that this is something great. And the only thing, and you may have said this, but when something like that happens, when a fireman sees something, especially EMS, they go out to an accident, they see something traumatic. I think you said, is it volunteer, or is it a requirement that they go seek or talk about it within their peer group, within this new mental, is it a requirement that they go talk about that?
So that's a, that's a very difficult thing to do, to make it mandatory, because everybody reacts differently.
Yeah.
And please correct me if I'm wrong on this, because we talk very regularly. Sometimes mandating it can be more detrimental. So it is organic, and it can be a supervisor who's like, "You're just not acting right. Are you okay?" It can be a peer who says, "Wow, you're not acting right." Or it can be that, that individual who says, "That call really bothered me." And so it really has to be organic. So it's not mandatory. It can be more detrimental. We, we just work on it, and if we notice something, then we have the conversations.
Well, and that's a great thing, because, you know, you got the peers that can tell, you know, especially if they spend 24 hours in a, in a firehouse watching each other. They cover each other, they take care of each other. And so that's very important. But I just want to say I commend you guys, because I still, I always scratch my head and figure out how you guys do that every day. You know, I go by and I see a terrible accident, and you guys have to be in there doing that and going through all the hecticness, and then go back and do it again, you know, and it's amazing. So thank you for what you do, and I think that this is a, a great investment in our, our local heroes, you know. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Considering, having been a first responder and in the military and out, I understand, and I appreciate that the timing of this is in Suicide Prevention Month, and that's the perfect timing. That is a silent killer, and it's becoming the fastest killer of those of us that have either served in the military or have been public servants. And it hurts those that are around the ones that, the, when one of our team members are lost, it affects the rest of the team. And I think this is a, just, I'm not going to repeat everything what the council said. I totally agree with it. I do have a quick question, considering the team. In case there's a police officer that responded to a very similar incident and needs emergency care, that's at Fire Department, would they be able to use it as well?
Well, so our brothers-in-blue over there, of course, we'll be happy to rescue them. They rely on us all the time, right, Chief? I highly suspect you're going to see something very similar coming up from the Police Department. But in the meantime, until they get this up and running, we will absolutely 100% be happy to assist any of our officers who need that as a part of a critical incident that we're involved in.
Yeah, and I like, even if it's vice versa, it's the same case, the Police Department, in that if somebody just happens to be overwhelmed with the coverage, that it crosses over. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor Proton, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. So it's, it's obviously an honor to know that there was a, a need that was out there that we were able to be a part of filling that void. This is a huge deal, and also excited to be, exciting to be proactive with something that is so detrimental to a lot of people. For your team of peers that put this together, you know, will we get any feedback from them, maybe in a, in a year, or at the end of, you know, when it's time to re-up the, the program in general with regards to how it's working, or if, if there's an increase need, or what do they need from us as far as moving forward with this process? Will we get any feedback from you all at the end of that first year, to see how it went?
So the, the feedback piece is going to be very important, to keep anonymity. Biggest thing in the, especially firehouse, or even on the streets of the Police Department, is that they don't want everybody else knowing that they're seeing the treatment. So what the communication is right now with Fro Sandoval, he will come in monthly, and it's just a loose conversation, but we can actually codify those things onto a piece of paper that is just, this many firefighters came to us, this many were not referred, this many worked through peer support, and that was it. But we will definitely keep anonymity. That's even one of the things of not having somebody on staff as a city employee, because that is one of the identified things that is the biggest roadblock to those who need help actually asking for it, is that they're just afraid that they're part of the government machine, and we don't want that. So we feel that this is a great opportunity to have an outside vendor, that patient confidentiality is kept, even though it always would be, it's just that perception that's out there of, of an internal employee-type person. So it would be just numbers of 25 firefighters sought assistance from peer support, five were referred out, and that's the end of it. But that would be the numbers that we would have.
And so what I, and I appreciate that, and I would never want anyone's personal information. That's not what I was referring to. But in general, if the program is working or not, if we have a need where we need to increase the funds, do we need two people at $85,000? I don't know. That's really what I was looking for, is obviously at the end of that year, will you be able to tell us kind of that information? How else can we help?
Gotcha. I apologize for misunderstanding the question. Yes, we will not be afraid to come back to you, and if the, the amount allocated is not enough, we'll make sure that within the budget process of that current year, we will get more, because this is that important. We'll move funds from other places if we need to, and then for the next year, plan accordingly if we need more. And they're not going to be afraid to tell me they need more.
Yeah, because if it works, we don't want it to fall by the wayside. So thank you very much.
Hey, Chief, thank you. With AL Solutions, I know they're available 24 hours, so how's that going to work? Because they can get burnout too. Is it different, social workers coming in, it's a rotation base? How's this going to work?
So I think the best person to answer that question will be Dr. Alton, so if you don't mind, I'll invite him up, and he can explain that a little bit.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yeah, to your question, we have a team. We've been building a team for, for about six years to deal with these particular type of leaders within our community. So we have a team of counselors, therapists, psychiatrists, also coaches and chaplains as a part of A&amp;L Solutions that provides these services as a, as a comprehensive integrative mental health program. So as we're, we plan this, and as we were working to make sure that we kind of help with this epidemic that we're having within our emergency response, is that we're making sure that our team is able to flex their schedule, have enough recovery time. We have internal chaplains to our A&amp;L Solutions that take care of our providers also.
Yes, sir. And that was one of our major concerns, because their job is in the first responders across the nation, but we're entrusting you with clean fitness. So we want to make sure you're on top of your game, they need you, you're available, and you're energized, and you can resolve whatever he or she may be going through.
Yes, and I believe our team is, is prepared for it. We work in a similar capacity with physicians in Scott and White, as well as with children advocacy centers and other law enforcement organizations, departments. So we are trained, we're prepared, and we definitely feel this is a mandate of what A&amp;L Solution is called to do.
Thank you so much, sir. Chief, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am. I just need to commend our firefighters and the peer support team, and I need to do that publicly.
Will you please have them stand up, please?
Please.
Would you like to come up and talk to us about how, what does this mean to you to have additional support? Sir, you can come up too. Please, just state your name.
I'm Matthew Sandoval.
I'm Brianna Willdung.
It's amazing to finally have this in place, and we thank y'all so much for giving us this ARPA money, and that we now have a secured step further than what we have done before. And that's just, you may need to see somebody, let's hope you find that. And now we have, we have these hours set. Let me get you a spot. It's next, the next two days, the next, the next day. It is awesome to have Dr. Alton on our side.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Oh, it means a lot, because we have, you know, military, we've got a lot of prior military people we need, and first responders are a little bit kind of a different animal. So we like to have somebody who's actually well-versed with the first responders, so we can feel comfortable, we kind of speak the same language, so that we understand each other, and we feel a lot more comfortable a lot quicker.
Thank you. That's something that Councilmember Sagara stated. That's great. Sir, please come up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I would like to say that in the 23 years that I've worked for the City of Killeen Fire Department, this is a huge step forward, and thank you so much. I have...
Take your time.
I've had opportunity to see colleagues come and go because of their unresolved problems, and this is, this is huge. I would also like to say thank you to Dr. McCollum and his group. He has been there for us prior to this, this contract, and some of it has been for the benefit of the, of the, the firefighters getting treated. So he, he has done, he's been awesome, and just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you all for your service and your commitment to this community. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23154, consider a memorandum resolution of support for the selection of Railhead Energy Resiliency as the FY 2024 Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant project.
Okay, Mr. Cagle, before you answer that, let me find the question. The question is just, who and where is Killeen? Who, okay.
I remember it.
Okay, you do? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So, so first, let me introduce this and explain what it is, what the DAG grant is, Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. You can go ahead. Yeah. So this is a program that the State of Texas put into place to, to help support military bases in the State of Texas, and to help make sure that they stay around. And so funding's available to local cities, counties, and, and forts, bases, air bases, naval stations. But they're to be used for projects that will increase the military value of the installation. Projects can include the purchase of Department of Defense property, new construction or rehab of facilities in support of job creating projects and opportunities. And the one that's going on right now is over, when we took the tour of the water treatment plant at Belton, you didn't see it just yet, but as you came in, they were starting the site work on a, a large generator that will be able to power the water treatment plant in case of failure of the electric grid. They'll be generating their own power, it'll be powered by natural gas, and they can actually send power back into the grid when the grid needs it as well. And so this was, that project was partially funded with the DAG grant, and Fort Cabosos participated, and all the WCID customers participated. This project is a little, is a little bit different. We're not spending money on this project. This is just a resolution to support the application from Fort Cabosos, excuse me, from Fort Cabosos. They currently have five locomotives that they use on, on base to move equipment around. This would convert one of them to, to electric. And the big issue is that it reduces their operating costs by 60% and maintenance costs by 40%. And it also serves as battery backup. It's a, it's a huge battery on the, on the locomotive, I think it was 2.4 megawatts, that serves as a reserve power for the base. So the other thing that happens in, in these is, is one of the local entities, whether it's Bell County, City of Killeen, Copper's Cove, works to provide the financial, finance staff to process all the grant paperwork. Harker Heights has agreed to do this one. Currently, the Killeen staff is providing the support for the DAG, DAG project at the water treatment plant. So in the past, sometimes there has been some token amount required, like $1,000 or something from the community. At this point in time, we don't believe there's going to be. So this would be a $5 million grant to Fort Cabosos, and they will be spending 7.3 million. Now, this is competitive. There's no guarantee that, that they're going to get this. It's usually a good sign when there's over 50% local match, which is all Fort Cabosos. So all this does is a resolution supporting this. It helps get them points in the... It helps get them points in the, in the competitive process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to kind of point out, and our city manager mentioned our last year's project, and that council originally, if I remember right, when the cost of the generator first came up, we did vote for the full amount that we as a city would pay for. But then when the DAG funding came out, because it was, we were talking about that, we said if DAG comes out, then it'll save us some money, and I think that's exactly what happened. We were able to save some money with that DAG funding. So it's something that, I think it's a great program. It comes out every year. It, it, as cities, we all take turns doing whatever we, we need to do, and, you know, we've done the airport, where we did the radar tower one year, and so, but I don't think we've ever had to pay anything, you know? So I don't remember anything. If anything, it was just, like, like you said, $1,000, but
Yes, sir.
It's always money that's given to, to communities. So I just want to make sure clear so that all our citizens understand that this is nothing that's, it's coming out, it's coming in actually, so.
That's correct.
Great explanation. Councilman Sagara, anyone else? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Mr. Kegel, can you just confirm the cost savings on the electric? You said that it was like 60% it would save, or can you restate that for me, please?
Yes, ma'am, just a minute. I believe it was 60% on the operational cost and 40% on maintenance.
And then the why that was asked earlier by one of our constituents is because this is going to help our Fort Cabosos with mobilization, moving that equipment to and from. Is that correct? Is that what we stated as far as the why?
Yes, ma'am. They could still do this with the diesel, but this provides some diversification in their energy source. It also is a backup power supply when needed, and it does reduce their costs.
Thank you.
And it'll become a gigantic battery in case of emergency. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Kegel. Madam Secretary.
RS 23155, consider a memorandum resolution approving a fireworks display application from Big Dog Pyro LLC on behalf of Advent Health Medical Center.
Welcome back, Chief.
Happy to be back. A little bit of background information, Section 11.6 of the Colleen Code of Ordinance provides that City Council may permit use of fireworks for public display, and there are a list of application requirements, and those are nothing new as we've discussed a couple of fireworks permits over the last year you should all be familiar with. Big Dog Pyro LLC submitted an application for a fireworks display on behalf of Advent Health Medical Center on September 1st, 2023. That application met the current requirements of the 21-day submission prior to the request of the fireworks date. This is for their breast cancer awareness event on September 28th, 2023, and would be from approximately 8:00 to 8:15 PM at Advent Health Medical Center. Licensing, insurance, site plan, storage, and type of fireworks have been provided in the application. The fire marshal has reviewed the application, and the submitted application, the documentation itself, all meets the, the requirements, so it would be approved on that side of it. Fire department approval, though, would be contingent on improvement of weather conditions. We do have concerns with red flag warning days, and what I would like to do is reserve the right to cancel the display of the appropriate amount and not receive prior to the date of the event. Fire department would re-inspect the site and conditions on Monday, September 25th, which is the day before the next city council meeting, and we'd come back at the next meeting to discuss this and give an official recommendation. So there are your alternatives, which is to deny, approve with specific stipulations, or approve as submitted. Again, we're asking council to not take any action this evening, and we'll have a little bit better picture come next Tuesday on a recommendation. If it's a red flag warning day, I can tell you we're not going to want to approve it at all, but if we don't see any rain in the next seven days, we might recommend approval with costs by the applicant to have a brush truck out on site and ready to go in addition to what we normally have out there for fire marshal's office representatives. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. So basically, you're saying that everything that's a goal is predicated on the weather?
That is correct.
All right. Any question? Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, no. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 23156, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to vacant and unexpired terms on various boards and commissions.
Thank you. Attorney Clemens. Oh, no, it's you. It's both of you. Madam Secretary and Attorney Clemens. It's both of you, correct? Attorney Clemens?
That's correct. Ms. Calco is going to take the lead, and I'll interject as necessary. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
How are you?
Good, good.
Well, I passed over you last time.
It's okay, Mayor. I do not take offense.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. So the City of Colleen has various boards, commissions, and committees that serve an advisory capacity per City Code of Ordinance's Section 2-116. All appointments and reappointments to citizens' boards, commissions, and committees shall be made by the City Council prior to October 1st of each year for all positions to be filled for that fiscal year. Generally, members are term limited at six years unless specialized knowledge is required or other good cause is found by council. Some members have requested reappointment. So we'll dive right in. The Animal Advisory Committee. The subcommittee council member is Mr. Adams. Animal Services Director Jessica Green has requested to be reappointed to the committee. City staff has tried to make contact with 28 clinic veterinarians within the Colleen, Belton, Temple, Salado, Gerald, Coppers Cove, Harker Heights, and Fort Cabosos areas, and has not received a response from anyone interested in filling the veterinarian position. Also, it would be helpful to wait to appoint the city official to the committee until after an assistant city manager is hired, as the previous ACM fulfilled that role on the committee. There is also a citizen representative vacancy on the committee caused by a member resignation earlier in the year. So do you have any recommendation?
I'm trying to pull it up, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I did.
Do anybody have a recommendation?
There was an individual that's not serving on any committees. I just can't pull it up right now.
Do you have others with the names? Thank you, Attorney Clemens.
The winner nominee, John Louts.
For the citizen rep?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I agree with the city secretary's recommendation of postponing the appointment of the city rep until we appoint the city manager, assistant city manager, and we continue to look for another vet. And I'll try to reach out with Mr. Joyner again, like I did the last time, to get him to stay, but it was, excuse me, Dr. Joyner.
Okay. Next, we have the Arts Commission. Two current members requested reappointment to the Arts Commission. Mr. Miller is term limited but occupies a specialized position of folk art, painting, sculpture. No other applications received can fill that role at this time. Aaron Hughley did not request reappointment for the Arts Commission. However, a current commission member and applicant, Christopher Brown, is specialized in the educator arts position and is eligible to fill that role. If Brown was appointed to the educator arts position, that would create an at-large member vacancy on the commission.
Do any council members have recommendations? Any? Councilmember Gonzalez, Alvarez, Solomon, Sagara, Bell? Councilmember Alvarez.
After looking over the packet, I had Ashley Rodriguez on mine.
To fill what position, sir?
The in-law?
Yes.
With the order that you said, if we move that person to education?
Okay, so move Brown, Mr. Brown, to education. Okay, got it.
Because they meet that criteria, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then he just gave, who was that? Councilmember Alvarez?
My packet, I had Ashley Rodriguez in it.
Okay.
Okay. Do that fill all the vacancies? Ms. Love?
Yes, ma'am, as long as council is fine with reappointing Mr. Fraley and Mr. Miller to those other two specialty positions. Okay.
So do, do anyone have anyone for the specialty for music, radio, TV, tape, and sound recording, or I don't think, folk art and painting sculpture? Do you have anyone to replace them? If not, we can move forward. Any recommendations?
No, ma'am. And they both requested reappointment, both of those positions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the Audit Committee. Even though both of these gentlemen are termed, they have requested to be reappointed to this committee, and there were no other applications received.
They're fine. We can move to the next one.
Okay.
They don't have any other applications?
No, ma'am.
So, so no.
Next, we have the Board of Adjustment Construction. Councilmember Alvarez is a subcommittee. The information for the Board of Adjustment Construction has been updated from what was sent in the meeting packet. Philip Marley and Tracy Archer are both up for reappointment and have been added to the slide. All four members are specialized in their respective areas and have requested reappointment to the board. No additional applications were received for the board.
Yes, ma'am. How often do they meet, Madam Secretary? Do they even meet once in a blue moon?
The board meets the third Thursday of each month at 1:30 PM as needed.
As needed, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilmember Alvarez, this is you?
Yes, ma'am. Like stated, there were no other applicants in there, so I would go with what we got.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is the Board of Adjustment Fire Prevention Code, and the subcommittee is Councilmember Solomon. No applications were received, and none of the current members requested reappointment for the Board of Adjustment Fire Prevention Code.
So there's no applications, and you don't want to be back on?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is it any way possible we can move Fire Prevention Code, and I'm just doing this out there with code of adjustment, because they don't even really meet? Can we just make that a combination together?
That is.
Mr. Kegel, legal feedback?
Go ahead, Holly.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I need to look into that. Our ordinance, it would definitely, if we were able to do it, it would require an ordinance change because it's in the ordinance as such, but, and I believe it's actually part of the International Fire Code that sets this up, but I, I think we could probably make it a Board of Adjustments, but it would require an ordinance change.
I'm just curious, because they, they meet as needed, and I don't remember since I've been on here, whatever time they have met.
Yeah.
And if we having a problem with, we don't even have any application for the Fire Prevention Code. So we have a board, but we have no applications.
So your question earlier about the construction board, it does, it does meet pretty regularly, not every month, but it does meet. The Fire Prevention Code, to my knowledge, has met once in the last three or four years. So it is very, this, this board is very infrequent, and, and so we can definitely look into.
I'm just asking a question. Mr. Kegel, I know that you want to.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Are you finished, ma'am?
Yes.
I was just going to say, I'm used to one Board of Adjustment doing all these duties. So unless, so city attorney's going to research, unless we have some, some quirk in our charter or some other one, I, I think we could probably do it.
I think we can. I just want to be
Yes.
extra sure and look into it, but I do know that this is one that's set up by ordinance. So if we can do it, which I think we can, but I need to confirm that, then we would need to come back with a code change.
Okay. Well, if you look into it, just so we can bring it back to the council and see their viewpoints on it.
Sure.
Yeah. All right, Madam Secretary.
Ma'am. A quick question. Do we need to do a motion of direction if that's going to be the order?
If that's what you want to do.
Okay. I do a motion of direction for staff to look at, recombine the Board of Adjustments, and come back with a recommendation to council.
Councilmember Boyd. Yeah, you don't click in, but he's come. All in favor, motion of direction, the Councilmember Adams, second by Councilmember Boyd. Did you get that, Madam Secretary?
Yes, ma'am. But you may have to vote by raising your hands, because I'm not over there.
Okay, motion of direction carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Boyd.
Moving along. Board of Adjustment Zoning, subcommittee is Councilmember Alvarez and Mayor Nash King. Three of the current members for the Board of Adjustment Zoning requested reappointment, and none of them are termed. Claudia Conroy did not request reappointment. Council has several applicants to consider to fill the citizen representative position on that board.
I will allow Councilmember Alvarez, whomever you choose.
I had Van Fraley as my choice if there wasn't another.
He's already serving on the committee. Do we have anybody else that have not served on a committee? If not?
I don't see one.
Okay, we'll go with, you're on the committee, so we'll go with whomever you choose.
Okay.
Next one.
Next is the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. Several members for the committee requested reappointment, and they are not term limited. 40% of the members must be members of the real estate development or building industry, and at least one member must reside in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Angela Santos is eligible to fill the role of ETJ resident since Cindy Rowe did not request reappointment. The only two real estate developers that requested reappointment were Southworth and Mr. Welch requested reappointment too, just today. So there are two of the real estate development positions that are still open, and the community representative position is vacant, and council has multiple applicants to choose from for that position.
Madam Secretary, if I understand you correctly, two real estate developers, developers, two of them are open in one community?
If you move Ms. Santos to the ETJ resident, that would open her position as well.
All right.
For a community rep. Yes, ma'am.
So we'll move her there, and then we have the community rep and two, okay. Did you have anybody ETJ?
We moved Ms. Santos to that position.
Okay. So this is two developers in one community.
Sure, and I don't have anyone to recommend at this time, but I did reach out to Commissioner Minor, considering we don't have enough people to really apply for these, and he mentioned he is interested. I'm not sure if to put an application in.
No, sir. I have not received an application from Commissioner Minor.
But he's already on there. And he's not turned.
Right. And I'm pointing out, it says, did they request reappointment? It says no, and in fact, it's a yes, or it doesn't matter. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. So I'll, I'll change it to yes, even though he hasn't completed an application.
That's up to, if that's legal, I'm just sharing that I spoke to him.
Okay.
He expressed his interest.
Okay. So what we were trying to find out is that he told you, but he didn't tell the secretary that he wanted to be reappointed. And my question is, why would And my question is, why would he have to do an application? If he's already on the board, he just had to say yes or no if he wanted to get reappointed. And I could be missing something.
No, ma'am. I believe that the liaisons for these boards and commissions reached out to current sitting members and, you know, asked if they were still interested, and some of them they didn't hear back from, so this is the most up-to-date information I have.
So would you reach out to him to see if he wants to be on there? Because I, I
Yes, ma'am.
Just to be fair.
Sure.
Again, but.
Sure. And the same with Ms. Howard as well? Since she's the other real estate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have to be fair. So if you reach out to both of them, both of those slots are gone, so we only have one now, if they say yes.
That's correct. You still have a vacant community representative.
Yes, ma'am, community representative. Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Alvarez, can I go to Councilmember Gonzalez? Because you already gave one. Councilmember Gonzalez.
On this one, Sandra Wooten.
Who?
Sandra Wooten.
Sandra Wooten. So we filled all the positions, and Madam Secretary is gonna call both of them again. And for the record, they either already said no, or the staff tried to contact them, and they didn't reply back to them, so the staff did their job. She's just gonna follow up with the two based on what Councilmember Boyd stated. And if they decide they don't want to do it, it was a misunderstanding, then those, you can bring that back to us next time.
Yes, ma'am. I'll bring that back next week.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we go to the next one, I, I may have missed it, but were there, there were two community reps that we needed to fill since we were moving Ms. Santos to the ETJ resident?
We are.
Yes, you're right, Holly. Thank you.
And then we need one more?
Councilmember Alvarez, going back to you. Who do you have? I'm sorry, I thought it was just one.
Thank you, Holly.
I was gonna say Sandra Wooten as well, but Councilmember Gonzalez already named her. You have another one?
Councilmember Proton Sagara, Solomon, somebody.
Mayor, if you don't mind, while, while they're looking, we're assuming that the, the people that are already on there that requested reappointment, you're, you're good with the reappointments?
Right, right. So when they said another vacancy, I didn't see it on there. But the city attorney says it's two. Yes, any, before I move on, no? Okay.
I just have a question, and I don't have a name. Now, how often does this board meet? I was, I used to be on this board when it first got started. We've been pretty frequently, but when was the last time they had a meeting?
The board or the committee meets biannually.
Biannually?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And Mr. Zaggers, he is the board liaison.
Madam Mayor. Let's see, Levi Banigan. He's one of the applicants that's not serving on any other committee.
Okay, we'll take him.
Okay, for the other community rep.
I mean, come on, y'all. We, we had this almost a week. I'm gonna just spit out these names. All right.
Okay.
Moving to the next.
Okay. Next, we have the Civil Service Commission, and this is Mr. Cagle's appointment. Mr. Hawthorne, Hawthorne, excuse me, is termed but has requested reappointment to the commission.
And Mayor, if you would, if the council would agree to reappoint him, I, I support that.
Yes, sir, that's fine. We can go to the next one.
The Community Development Advisory Committee. Three of the four members for the committee have requested reappointment, and they are not termed. Jonathan Hildner did not request reappointment, and council has a slate of applicants to choose from to fill the citizen representative position.
Do we have anyone that does not serve on the committee? Councilmember Alvarez.
My recommendation would be to appoint Tony Ringold in Jonathan Hildner's place.
Okay, Tony. Good selection, selection. Any objections? All right, we can move on, Madam Secretary.
The Downtown Advisory Committee currently has a vacancy due to resignation. Committee members were first appointed in March of 2023. The Clean Arts Commission member is required to fill the vacancy. Kristen Wright currently serves on the Arts Commission and has submitted an application to be considered.
Great applicant. Okay, we can move on then. They have to be on the Arts Commission. She already asked because she'd be on it, so.
Okay.
Does anybody want to challenge that? Do we move forward? You agree?
Next, we have the Heritage Preservation Board. Mark Manning is the only current member that requested reappointment to the Heritage Preservation Board. The information shown indicates there will be two vacancies created for the specialized position of downtown tenant. However, staff cannot locate in the code of ordinances creating the board, nor any other documentation, that these two positions must be downtown tenants. The board should include members with the following qualifications representing the following interests: a licensed real estate broker, a property owner or non-property owner tenant of any historic district created by this or any subsequent ordinance demonstrating interest and knowledge of historic preservation; a member appointed at large from the city with demonstrated interest and knowledge of historic preservation. And council has applications to consider to fill these two positions.
Councilmember Adams.
I want to know your trim mark, Lemon. Cat, excuse me.
Who?
Tremont Cannon is one of the.
Do they meet all the qualifications per their application?
Let's see. My understanding.
If I can clarify on this one, what we're saying is that the, the other, the members that are still on the, on the board right now do meet the qualifications. And so the, the other two that are not requesting to be reappointed, those can be just citizen representatives.
Okay, there go one. Can I give another one? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Rebecca Williams.
Rebecca Williams.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Clean Economic Development Corporation. The information for the KEDC has been updated from what was sent in the meeting packet. Tad Doro and Meredith Figures' appointments are active through September 30th, 2025, so there are only two terms expiring. Mr. Guzman is currently completing a term from a vacancy left by Carl Green, so if he's appointed, this would be his first of three-year term. The KEDC has recommended Mr. Guzman be appointed as a Clean and Industrial Foundation representative. Mr. Hawxworth was termed, and the KEDC has recommended Mr. Todd Fox to fill the position as a chamber representative.
Okay. All right, next.
Is council good with Mr. Fox?
They, we, we, they have to get appointed from their organization anyway. It's not like I can say one of the council member can serve in that because it's not slotted for a council member. So that's what the organization wants.
Okay.
We can move on.
Clean Sister Cities. Ms. Brand did not request reappointment. There are two applicants to consider for the open position of citizen representative. Also, this board has not met since October of 2017.
Okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez, Alvarez, she's not gonna be there, so we can just put somebody in the position so we can say we got them off field.
Right, Ladonna, Barbie.
Okay. Did you hear that, Madam Secretary?
Ms. Barbie? Yes. The Planning and Zoning Commission. There's been an update to this commission as well. Ms. Sabri has requested reappointment, along with the other two members. None of the current members are term limited.
Council, y'all okay with everyone being reappointed? Okay, they're fine. We can move to next. No, ma'am.
Recreation Services Advisory Board. There's also been an update to this. Mr. Kendrick has requested reappointment, along with the other three current members, and none of them are term limited.
That's a great team. Council, you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, move on.
Next, we have the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. The subcommittee is Mayor Proton Cobb and Councilmember Solomon. There's been an update to this board as well. Devra Boyt's position has been added to the list of terms expiring, and she did not request reappointment, nor did Mr. Fenderson. And then the other three members have submitted applications to be reconsidered for appointment, and they are not term limited. And you have additional applications to choose from, from, for the other two citizen representatives.
So you have two people you can fill from your application. Mayor Proton.
First, I want to say thank you to the persons who were working on that, on those committees. They serve well. The persons that I, you want one, Councilwoman Solomon? I'll go with Stella Henson.
Do you have anybody, Councilmember Solomon, you would like to point, or is it okay for Mayor Proton to just point? Mayor Proton?
That's Stella Henson, and. Is there any discrepancy in between a husband and a wife team? Because they have both filled out an application.
We don't have any rule prohibiting that.
Okay, so that's Julio Henson, Mr. and Ms. Henson.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Did you want to put somebody? Because. Okay. Madam Secretary?
Okay. The Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board. The Bell County's Commissioner Court considered the reappointment of Mr. Whitson to the Ters Number Two Board yesterday, September 18th. Judge Blackburn's office stated they will send over the minutes to city staff for our records, noting Mr. Whitson's reappointment to the board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We can move on.
That's it?
Awesome. Great job.
Thank you.
So your recommendation?
Staff recommends that the city council appoint individuals to fill the identified vacancies and expired terms.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, 7:21. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We just finished up for item 15. All right, Madam, yes, sir. Madam Secretary, council, we have an item number 16. As you know, it's about the budget paying for the remaining funding that is needed that was already allocated by council. If we go into detail questions on this item, we will have to go into closed meeting. Madam Secretary.
RS-23-157. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the remainder of funds previously approved for fiscal year 2023 to defend the Bell County lawsuit related to marijuana enforcement be carried forward into FY 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Are there any, uh, city attorney?
Thank you. I have a presentation. All right, this is the, the item to carry forward the previously approved funds for the Bell County lawsuit from '23 to '24. No new funds are being requested. Background, on April 11th, 2023, Bell County sued the city seeking to invalidate the marijuana enforcement ordinance adopted by the citizens of Colleen. In June, the city council ratified an agreement with Shields Winups for legal services in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for fiscal year 2023 without further council approval. Balance remaining in authorized funding for fiscal year 2023 is $42,213.68. The lawsuit was not resolved in this fiscal year, and so to continue to defend the lawsuit, approval is needed to carry forward the remainder of the funds that were previously approved for fiscal year 2023 into 2024. And again, this would not increase the amount of funding that was previously approved. It would just move it into the next budget year. And to continue to defend the lawsuit filed by Bell County, staff recommends the city council approve carrying forward the remainder of the previously approved funds into 2024.
Thank you. Public hearing will be held on September 26, 2023. Council, you have five minutes to speak two times each. Madam Secretary.
PH-23-052. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the City of Colleen to adjust revenue and expenditure accounts in multiple funds.
Thank you. Mrs. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the Year End Budget Amendment. Each year, the finance team works with the departments to align the budget with projected revenues and expenditures to bring those to one final cleanup budget amendment at the end of the year. And all of the budget amendments that, that you will see have a zero or net positive increase, except for the aviation grant that appropriates the 10% grant match for that project. So this covers multiple funds for transfers, leases, reimbursements, multiple items. So we'll start with the general fund. So we have the revenues and expenditures. We received $494,150, and this was for the winter storm Yuri and COVID money that was received from FEMA. We have the Texas Task Force reimbursement, $24,151. And we have $3,400 that was received from solid waste to pay for three mowers that were transferred from the fire department to the transfer station. And then we had insurance proceeds of $177,450 that was paid by various insurance claims. And then we have lease proceeds, which is part of an audit where we have to recognize a lease in the year that it's inceptioned, where we have a, a revenue and the offsetting expense. When we lease a copier or a postage machine, we have to recognize the full cost of that lease. So that's what, you'll have the lease proceeds and then the equipment here. So for the, the, um, the money we received from the winter storm for the $494,150, we are appropriating that to the fire department to cover their separation pay. And then the Texas Task Force deployments is going to the fire department to cover the overtime for those deployments. And then the insurance proceeds covers the claims and damages, and that was for the fire at the Chamber and for several traffic signals that have been hit throughout the city, where we've claimed that on the insurance. For the Water and Sewer Fund, we also have the, and you'll see this in each fund, where we received money back from FEMA for the winter storm and for COVID. That's this, this money right here. And then we have the, again, the lease proceeds. And then we have here where we have the water purchase. We're anticipating that the WCID will, will go over budget $289,800, but we have funds available in bad debt to cover that. And the reason for that is because we're changing the, uh, the budgeting practice for that, for bad debt going forward, starting in FY 24. We'll no longer be budgeting for bad debt, because the, the budget practice for that is, is you do not budget for non-cash items. That's a GASB entry. And so we'll no longer be budgeting for that, so that's available to cover that water purchase in FY 23. For the solid waste fund, we have the same thing here with the lease proceeds and the COVID dollars. And as you can see, these all have more revenues than they do expense. And then for the drainage, it's just strictly revenue. We're recognizing the money that was received from FEMA. Same thing for the aviation fund. And then for the fleet service fund, we're transferring a hundred and forty dollars from accounting services to cover, uh, increased cost of the, uh, copier. And then on the hotel occupancy fund, these costs are for the mixed beverage sales. So we've had increased mixed beverage sales, so it's bringing in more revenue. This is the revenue that's in excess of what we had budgeted, but that increased revenue has also driven up the cost of the cost of goods sold. So those offset one another. And as you can see, the revenues exceed the expenses. And then for the CDBG, you have the, the lease here. It's the same thing as the others for the copiers and the postage machines. And then for the special revenue funds, we have two special revenue funds where we're recognizing revenue. One is for opioid settlement that was received from the state. We received a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one fifty-two. Now, the state has... Let me get to that note here. The state has allocated five hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for Colleen, but we've received only a hundred and sixty-eight, one fifty-two of that amount. It will come in tranches. And community development is working on a plan to use those funds because it will be restricted to use for certain programs that are specific for, um, first responders training and things that are specific to, uh, uh, the opioid crisis. And then the parks development benefit fund, this is for the new park development fee and the fee in lieu of parkland, and this is just recognizing the revenues that have been received. And then we have this CIP bond completion. This is for a 2013 water and sewer improvement bond. Uh, it has some residual funds left that are being moved to the water and sewer CIP fund so that we can close out the bond fund, uh, and it'll, it'll be used to pay for the, uh, same water project. And then the same thing for this, uh, two thousand and six drainage bond. Uh, Green Forest and Wolf Ditch projects are complete, and we're just removing those residual funds to the drainage CIP fund to pay for a drainage improvement project and close out that bond. And then for the CIP aviation funds, this is to fund the project that, uh, Mr. Wilson briefed you on earlier, and this is, uh, the only one that has more expense than revenue, and that is because of the ten percent match required for the project that's paid out of the passenger facility charge fund, um, twenty-nine thousand, seven oh three. And then for the CIP governmental fund, uh, these are net zero. It's just recognizing insurance proceeds that were received for the Family Aquatic Center. The, there was a freeze, um, that damaged some equipment, and TML paid that claim, and we're recognizing that and putting that back in contingency where we got the money to pay for the repairs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-three, zero-five-three. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Bianca Hall on behalf of Rebecca Tinkshell, who is deceased, case number Z twenty-three nineteen, to rezone Lot One, Block Two, out of the Morris and Good survey from B five Business District to R one Single Family Residential District. The property is locally addressed as eight oh one East Avenue G, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Rival.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and City Manager. Uh, this resoning case, the rezoning of a property that's located at eight oh one East Avenue G from B five, which is a commercial designation to single family. The star shows the approximate location of the property. It's an area of the property. I've approved the applicant intends to retain existing single-family residence. Uh, the purpose of the request is to ensure that the sale of the property could take place as well as to ensure that the, if the existing structure was, had to be rebuilt as a result of a disaster, that that could happen. Um, in accordance with the Code of Ordinances, uh, R one designation is appropriate for this existing single-family, um, structure. Uh, the current structure, because of its zoning, is considered to be legal non-conforming, but this request and change in the zoning would, would correct that. Uh, it shows the structure and the surrounding properties and zoning. I won't spend a lot of time on this because this was pretty straightforward. It's not in the FEMA flood hazard area or the National Wetlands Inventory map. This is a view of the subject property, existing single-family residential structure, property to the east. All notification has been accomplished. Um, no written responses have been received. It shows the notification boundaries to two hundred and the four hundred. The two alternatives are listed there, and staff has recommended approval of the applicant's request to rezon the property from B five to R one. And the Planning and Zoning Commission on August the twenty-first heard this case and recommended to approve the applicant's request unanimously. If there are any questions, we're prepared to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Rival. There are no questions for you. Items for discussion at workshop. Counsel, you have two times to, each to speak for five minutes, two times each. Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-three, zero-nine-one. Discuss the K-Tempo Safe Streets and Roads for all SS four A grant.
All right. Mr. Cagle.
Uh, Mayor and counsel, we don't have a presentation on this one tonight. We've been asked by the COG to, to place this on, um, agendas for the foreseeable future in case they do have something they need to bring to us. It also helps them get points that this is on our agenda. So, um, unless I hear something different, I don't think we have anything to report on tonight.
Thank you. All right, Madam Secretary.
Uh, Mr. Adams.
Well, Madam Mayor, I believe Councilmember Adams had got something to, to say.
I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Cagle, and thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd, um... I might have to just talk loud because... Oh, there it is. Um, this was something that K-Tempo had requested, as Mr. Cagle has mentioned, as we get citizens to also come and speak, so I ask that council members can also put the word out, uh, for citizens to come in and speak about it. Um, I did mention to them about coming, the, possibly somebody from the staff, um, from K-Tempo staff coming to do a presentation about the grant as well. We are moving, and it appears that the, the region is moving forward closer to getting it. Uh, some of the other members of K-Tempo have already started doing it, and I guess once we start it, it will cause that, the percentage to go over to increase the likelihood of us getting the grant.
Anybody else? So, Mr. Cagle, moving forward every Tuesday until they come and present to us, this will be on the agenda. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
It's just a placeholder. Okay. Got it. Madam Secretary.
DS.
Madam Secretary.
I apologize, Mayor. My mic is having issues as well.
I think that's across the board.
It is. DS twenty-three, zero-nine-two. Discussion of proposed district for park opportunities.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Snook. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Tonight, in response to a presentation made by Councilmember Boyd, we have a presentation focusing on district for park opportunities, more specifically, the city of Colleen held properties. Some of the considerations in reviewing these properties included available access via ADA pedestrian or vehicular, parking availability, flood zone, concerns, zoning criteria, and SEPTED, otherwise known as crime prevention through environmental design. The first property on the list, and these are not in any particular order, is, um, the expansion of the Fort Hood Regional Trail, which was identified in our presentation from Mr. Boyd as, um, Robinette Community Park. This property runs from north to south, sort of, um, at the next... It would be the next segment of the Fort Hood Regional Trail. It aligns with our Parks and Open Space Master Plan, uh, specifically goal TR eleven, identify funding and develop a southwest greenway extension of the Fort Hood Regional Trail. Um, there are opportunities to add parking, and there are also trail grant opportunities for this, uh, either through Texas Parks and Wildlife or through KTMPO. Um, Segment two and three would extend all the way to Clear Creek Road. So there's actually a, two different segments of the Fort Hood Regional Trail that could be considered. Some of the constraints, uh, include that the majority of the property in these two segments is in the floodway or the floodplain, which would require us to get federal, um, memos, uh, essentially doing map revisions um, to allow any kind of construction, including trails within this area. The access locations are minimal, meaning that there's not great access into the neighborhoods from these segments, but there are some opportunities there, and some property maybe have to be acquired in different sections to make this work. The next property that was on the list was identified as Saddle Ridge Pocket Park. Um, this is a small park or a small detention basin, um, just off of Stan Schluter and, uh, Fort Hood Boulevard. Opportunities here would be to add a basketball hoop and sidewalk at grade in the existing slab. We would need to regrade around the slab. We could possibly add a small picnic area, and we would need to include a sidewalk for ADA access to the existing slab. So some of the constraints here is that this is a detention basin, which means it does flood from time to time. Um, it's currently not ADA compliant. It's very small, and it's very close to the neighbors, particularly on this lower... I guess I don't have a pointer. Um, on the, on the lower corner there, it's right up next to a home. Um, there is also no on-street or off-street parking available for this location. The next location is identified as Estancia West Neighborhood Park. Um, this one would require a sidewalk into the basin to the soccer area for ADA. There is currently soccer goals there, but there's not ADA access to it. We could potentially add a small picnic area, but some of the constraints on this site is that it is also a detention basin, meaning it does fill up time to time with water. Not currently ADA compliant. Um, you do see a row of homes there on the south side of the photo, um, that could cause concerns for closeness to the neighbors. And again, there's no on-street or off-street parking available, and we wouldn't be able to put any into the site either. And for a smaller park like that, we'd call that a neighborhood or walk-to park intended for the people that live closest to it. The next property is identified as the Eagle Valley Neighborhood Park, and I will mention that this is also along the Fort Hood Regional Trail Master Plan. Uh, this was be, uh, identified really as the third segment of the trail, so this is southeast Dan Schluter. Opportunities in here might be to include Loop Trail again, potentially a picnic area. Um, this property is landlocked. There is only one access, which is shown in the photo there, and it's sort of a driveway, but the rest of the entire park is fenced with residential homes on the backside. Um, so it is not visible from the street, only from this one little area here, um, which could be a concern for patrolling. And currently, there is no on-street or off-street parking available. Um, this does serve some drainage, um, purposes as well, and there's limited access between the homes. The next one is the Landing Neighborhood Park, uh, highlighted in the green there below. There is only one place conceivable to enter, and it's, um, basically, um, it's a swale there that is... Comes very close to the residential fences on each side. There's not enough space there to put in a trail or a, um, any kind of vehicular access. So this is really a hundred percent landlocked. There is no other entrance in and out other than that one spot there. All the other property is privately owned. Again, it would not be visible from the street. It would be difficult to patrol for the police officers. And again, there's no on-street or, or off-street parking available. So those are our first group. I think we have a lot of potential with the trail. Um, you will see at an upcoming council meeting on October third that we are, uh, presenting a resolution to apply for a grant with K-Tempo, and we also have some opportunities with Texas Parks and Wildlife to apply for trail grants as well. With that, I take any questions?
Councilmember Boyd, thank you very much for that research.
Yes, thank you very much for that research. We do appreciate it. Uh, as you may remember, counsel, in February, February of twenty-twenty-two, I presented District Four Parks Initiative, which included pocket parks, shared use parks, joint use parks, and special use parks, concepts and opportunities. Some of those opportunities I located would be established on city-owned land, uh, situated in existing neighborhoods, reducing the cost of land acquisition. Uh, so today, this presentation, uh, given by staff is a result of in-house research for the park potential on the city of Colleen-owned sites. I do want to say I appreciate staff going in and giving us some in-depth information relating to the opportunities and constraints. Um, but I do not want us to get hung up on the constraints. I like for us to meet the constraints with the solution uh, so that citizens on the west side have access to a park without having to travel across town. Uh, as a gentle reminder, West Colleen has one park and one trail, and that's it. We've allocated millions of dollars to improve our legacy in existing parks across the city, particularly in North Colleen. And, uh, as far as West Colleen, we have limited access. Uh, residents on the west side portion expect their tax dollars to be spent on quality-of-life projects such as parks, trails, and open space, of which we are extremely limited. Uh, with that said, I'd like for us to focus on the motion of directions uh, that were made on that meeting. As a reminder, there were five separate motions of direction that were made and passed unanimously by this council. Uh, one of them related to entering into discussions for... Give me a moment here. Entering into discussions to pursue the establishment of a twenty-three-acre park, um, which you guys are working towards, I understand. And the other one was to enter discussions with the landowner to take possession.
Councilmember Boyd, before you go more in detail, when you get to each one, can we get an explanation instead of just throwing them all into together, all five of them? Can we go one, and if it's not done, then we get an explanation why? Or do you just want to go through all of them, then go back?
Sure. I just want to, I'm kind of giving you guys a refresh on where we are with these District Four Parks. So the first motion of direction in particular was a motion of direction to study costs, and that's a good idea, Mayor, so we get answers on these, uh, to study the costs and ownership to pursue the establishment of a twenty-three-acre community park on the city-owned property located at the corner of Robinette Road and Elms Road for resolution. My understanding is that we're working on that now based on your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second motion of direction was for staff to enter into discussions with the landowner to take possession of the twenty-five-acre track, drainage track, located behind Pruitt Ranch Drive for the establishment of a subsequent community park with the city paying costs for the surveyor plat. Where are we on that?
So, um, first answer is we, we haven't. But what we were doing tonight was our first bite at the apple. But this number two is one that we can do and, um, that I, I've directed the Parks Director to get on this one quickly.
You're speaking on the motion I just mentioned?
Yes, sir. Number two. There were, you were right. I've got the five motions here, and that was the second one. That's the twenty-five acres behind Pruitt Ranch Drive.
Right. And then the third motion was for staff to enter into discussions with the landowner to accept a one-acre tract located at the intersection of Elms Road and Robinette for the Robinette Community Park, as well as a point-six, seven-acre tract located next to the Fort Hood Regional Trail entrance for parking, and accept the five-acre tract in the adjacent area. So in other words, that land area that we, that I identified has a piece of land, it's one acre, that's owned by someone, and the city was going to work to, according to the motion of direction, get that piece of land, as well as the other piece next to the trail entrance, so that we have parking. entrance, so that we have parking. So go ahead.
Right, and this one's a little more complicated, because the rest of that was to look at the cost, and when, on, this is some difficult land, and when we take that on in perpetuity, that means the cost of the land that we're getting is very expensive. I think we'd be better off just buying the acre that's the most usable, because a lot of it, on the northwest corner of that intersection, almost, well, none of that land is really appropriate for a park, so we would just be taking it over as, to maintain it. Because as, there's a little gap there in between Phase One and Phase Two, but it comes out and there's a sidewalk right along the road that will connect the Phase One to Phase Two. So all that land on the northwest corner, there's nothing we can really do with that, with a park. So we would, our payment in exchange for one acre would be maintaining that in perpetuity, and that, in my opinion, is far in excess of the, what the cost of the one acre would So that was, that was our look at it, and if council still wants us to do it, we're happy to do it.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you for that information. According to the motion of direction, that is the motion for us to pursue what the motion states. And so I was expecting, you know, kind of during this presentation, we had an update on where we are with these. In that same meeting, within discussion, we talked about accelerating and prioritizing the community parks, and we talked about pursuing what needs to be acquired as far as land tracts, according to this motion. So I'm not sure if something the council is interested in going back over, after we've stated this is how we want to go about acquiring it. Because we kind of, it's also understood, from my understanding, that the landowner sees it, that this is the way it's going to be acquired. And so that's a concern I have at this point, but I shouldn't have any concern because it's a motion.
Sure. And at the end of that, I believe I was asked how long this would take, and my response was, I don't know, because I've only got one Parks Director that didn't have any staff at the time, and after this was made, her focus had to be making sure the programs that we have in place now happen, like getting the pools open and getting the, we got issues with, we had issues with the rec center, with the Youth Advisory Commission, with the golf course, and I took the directions from the council seriously. And one of the things we did at the year-end budget was to add some help to the Parks Department to help make these things happen, the Park Planner. Because we do have $4 million in the CO that was issued for park development. That sounds like a lot of money. It will not go very far at all. But the only person we've had available to work on all of these items is Ms. Snook, in addition to all of her other duties. So I don't want you to think we were ignoring this, and we were trying to do the things we could get in motion as quickly as possible, in addition to all the other things that she has on her plate.
Sure. And I didn't put this on the agenda. I was patiently waiting for you guys to come back with that update. Excuse me, I know that discussion of that meeting as well, we talked about, Councilman Segaro, I mentioned us looking into funding mechanisms for the other parks. We talked about starting some of the parks with flat work, so to be feasible. We talked about how the city already maintains some of these properties, et cetera. But that was the third one. Thank you for addressing that. Again, I'm going off, based off the motion of direction. The fourth one is to make-
I have a question on number three. And I understand there's a motion of direction, but I just need some clarity. From what you just told me, and I'm not taking away from your motion of direction, I just want to be cost-effective when we make decisions based on our rented revenue for the city. Am I understanding you that the one acre that this landowner, that I'm assuming you went to him, Mr. Cagle, Ms. Snook, and told him or her that we're going to get this land?
No, ma'am. That was, that was told to us. We went and looked, we were also told to evaluate the cost, and so we went and evaluated that. We haven't approached the landowner, because from what I understand, there's a deal, this is the deal, take it or leave it.
You made that deal?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, okay, maybe I missed something. Are you saying that the one acre, that whoever made the deal, this one acre, that we would come out better getting some, this land is not good enough for a park? What is the purpose of this one acre? Maybe I missed that part. Is it for parking, or a park?
So, that's a great question for you to ask. In the midst of the 23-acre tract that the city owns, there's one acre that's on a very central portion of it, that could be used for parking, or used for a youth center or something of that sort. It's almost incumbent that you acquire that to complement the rest of the parkland.
So that's the city one acre?
No, the city doesn't own it. They own all the land around that one acre.
And somebody else wants to take that one acre?
No, that one acre, this, we're looking for the city to acquire, but not through paying for it.
Oh, they want to give it to us free?
Yes, along with the other piece of land that's next to the trail entrance.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I mean, the motion spells all that.
Right, okay. So I'm just, that's all, but you didn't want to take it because it, we shouldn't use that, why not, that one acre? I'm just trying to figure this out.
Because we have to take another five and a half acres or so that we have to maintain in perpetuity.
Is that part of the one acre, the five acres? I didn't hear five.
You're confusing me at this point.
I'm going by what he just said. Will you repeat, why are we not taking the one acre?
Well, part of the deal to get the one acre is to take additional acreage that cannot be developed.
Right. In other words, the city would be responsible for mowing the grass on those five acres. But in return, we get parking at the trail entrance, which we do not have, and we get the acre to complement that piece of land. A lot of people don't access the Fort Hood Regional Truck because they cannot park. That's how we establish parking.
So in order to get one acre, we have to take five acres?
Yes, ma'am. It's more than just that one acre, it's the .67 acre, in addition to that one acre.
Okay.
For the five.
I got it now.
And I'll wrap this up. The fourth motion of direction was to initiate discussions with the local community college, Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, and the Fort Hood Garrison to explore shared use park, joint use park concepts. And I will, so let me ask you where we're on that, before I make my next statement.
Sure. We've had some discussions with Fort Hood, and they're, they're interested in that one. Since there was a change of leadership in CTC, I just wanted to wait until we had the new, new chancellor there, and then we'll take that up, which we can do now.
Absolutely. And what the city manager is talking about is that corner of Mohawk Road and Clear Creek, that 110-acre tract, the base is considering working with the city for that to be a park, which is much needed on the west side. So that's the, the fifth one, I make a motion, I made a motion of direction to incorporate the proposed pocket neighborhood special use and linear park opportunities for council's consideration in the future. So a lot of the parks that we've seen today outside of the Robinette Community Park, those we're looking at for the future. When we had the discussion, I presented to the council the two neighborhood, community parks, to get those going. Reason being, just to repeat it again, is so that we have a park north of West Dan Schluter, and one south of West Dan Schluter. You have a lot of neighborhoods, and that's a central location on both sides, that will sufficiently meet the needs for parks for a while. And then later on, the idea is to work to establish pocket parks and all these, in those and other areas. So with all that said, thank you for that update. I just want to reiterate to the council, we made a lot of motions for this stuff to go forward the way we have it. Thank you.
Anything else from, oh, we got some more comments, some more councilmembers have an input. Councilmember Alvarez?
I believe one of the questions that I had at that time, and I'd like to re-ask it or kind of follow up on that question, and this may be a question for our city attorney. When we discussed this tract at the southwest corner of West Elms Road and Robinette, during those conversations for the original motions of direction, my question was, Bell County Appraisal District shows ownership is City of Colleen, but we know that in the past, the county has put properties in the city's name that weren't really the city's. It's because we had accepted a drainage easement per plat, or a drain, yeah, a drainage easement per plat. So on this particular property, that was my question at that time, is that the case with this piece of property? Do we own it, fee simple, or do we just own the rights to maintain a drainage easement on the property?
I have not done the research on that.
I believe the one-acre tract you're referring to is privately owned and not owned by the city.
I'm not talking about the one acre.
I'm sorry, Mr. Segaro.
I'm talking about property ID 421034, 23.298 acres, has a legal description, Conder Valley Phase Four drainage easement. So I want to ensure, if we're talking about this property for a potential trail project for District Four, that we get all of our ducks in a row, and ensure, do we own it, fee simple, or do we just own the rights to maintain it?
Is it this one I have on the screen? Is it that one? Because I don't know it by the property number.
Yes, that's the one.
As I understand it, we own west of the creek. We do not own east of the creek.
Okay, well, if our legal staff could look into that, if you pull up the county appraisal district, and parts of the property, the property boundaries encompass both sides of the creek, so, you know, before moving forward on this, we got to ensure that we own the thing and we can actually make changes to it. If we don't, then we need to have that conversation prior to that. And the other piece that Mr. Boyd's talking about, that .82 acres, it is absolutely necessary because the piece that supposedly the city owns, it has very little frontage on West Elms Road, and the frontage it does have is about 90% in the FEMA floodway, which is a no-touch, can't even put a sidewalk on it. So we do need the little piece next to it, the .8 acres, if we're going to try to do anything there, because that one's just in a floodplain, so that one we could overcome a little bit easier. Anyways, I just wanted to follow up with that question, if we could circle back with that whenever legal staff has time to look into it.
If, and I'm on Prop ID 421034, I am showing that that was conveyed to the city by deed in 2009, which would indicate fee simple, not looking at the actual deed, which we can do, but it's not showing easement, anything like that. It's showing deed.
Perfect, awesome. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cagle?
I was just going to say, we're working on bringing a design contract back to the council for this project, but what we ought to do for all of these is just go hire a ride-away company to get all this done for us, because we don't, we don't have staff that work on this, that are, that are, that do it as their job or skilled at it. Cities do this a lot by contract, so I think that's probably the best way, just to put all this to bed.
I'm just trying to, I mean, did we budget for this? We're throwing stuff, and not talking to you, Councilmember Boyd, if we're saying, do we even have the funding to hire somebody to do all of this?
We do. We, money was set aside for this. I, I'm just, it's not going to be that much. There are a number of firms out there that specialize in this.
So if that's your professional opinion, since we don't have staff, if we can get a motion of direction, that can cut down, before we make that, Councilmember Segaro would like to speak about it, and coming back to you, Councilmember Boyd, if that's the way we can move forward. It's painless.
I just want to ask, when we made these motions at that time, did we have a timeline? I can't remember if we had a timeline on this stuff to be back before the council. And the reason I ask is because it sounds like, in hearing all this, I mean, we had some kind of disconnect, you know? I think that we need to work closer, and especially with Mr. Boyd's district, because he's the one that made the motion, and it sounds like, you know, he's done the research, but I think that, for some reason, you guys did a good job doing this presentation, but it didn't hit the part of the motions that were made at that time. So we heard a lot, but I don't think it reflected what was the will of the council, you know, made by Mr. Boyd. And so I don't know why we're talking about this if we're not ready, if the staff didn't do that. So my thing is, was there, you know, disconnect, miscommunication somewhere? And, you know, I don't know if I need, I know, is, I think it's okay that staff work with a council member, is it? As far as I know. So I think we need to reach out to Mr. Boyd next time and make sure that he gets everything that he's supposed to, you know, don't fear reaching out to us, so that next time, you know, we're not questioning what's going on, or, because it sounds like if CTC's not ready, if, if, you know, we didn't talk to the owners, you know, there's a lot of things that were understaffed, those are things that should have been brought forth, and here we are discussing. I mean, it's a good thing we're having a discussion, because hopefully from this point on, we'll get better clarification, so the next time, but I don't want to come back before the council, and we're here at the same place, you know, nothing's happened, at least, you know, whether it's good or not, at least the actions that were made by the council, at least those were taken, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Segaro, Mr. Cagle would like to answer you.
We were asked that question, and I said, I can't tell you, because I don't have any staff to devote to this. And so what we tried to do tonight was, as I said, take a few bites at the apple. And so I hear that, I hear what the council has said, and so we'll take a different, a different approach to pick it up, pick up the speed.
Okay, so tonight, what you presented, Ms. Snook, is some alternate solution to, I guess I'm trying to figure out what everyone is saying, is this is presented tonight to assist us with choices, making decisions, or?
So these, all of these properties that I presented tonight, they were all presented in Mr. Councilmember Boyd's presentation, and I selected the ones that were City of Colleen-owned, because I felt those were the ones that we possibly could move forward with more quickly than properties that we did not own. So the first stab was, let's look at what we have already owned by the City of Colleen, and let's see what we can do with those. So that's what this presentation was.
Thank you. So therefore, you did understand the assignment. You just went at the ones that were more easier before you tackled the hard ones. Am I understanding, did she even meet your goal? I mean, she understood it, but?
Sure. Madam Mayor, the fifth motion of direction clearly states that the pocket parks and the majority of these parks are for the future. When we had the discussion, we were focusing on the community parks primarily. The newspaper did a big story talking about those two parks.
Okay, okay. So these parks may be for the future, and they are, they're easier to do, but the top priority should have been the ones that you requested first?
Yes, that's what we discussed.
Okay, I got it. Okay, I got, clear. So what you do have was for the future, but it's more easier with the limited staff. So that's in place, now we can really hit hard on the ones you want now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, give and take, I got it. All right, Councilmember Boyd?
I asked this question, because we had this presentation, I'm just now hearing, and I do wish that I was, you know, kind of bought into this process prior to this being my initiative, but we're just now hearing that we don't have staff to devote to this. We had this discussion back then, and maybe we knew then, but my point is, we're six months later, and we're starting kind of from here, when we already knew we could engage these consultants to start this ride-away process.
Okay, that's Mr. Cagle.
I don't know what to say, except that's what I said back then, and we took steps, taking the seriousness of it, to add a position to the budget, that's a big, it's a big deal. It is to me, and we haven't been able to fill the position. So knowing that this was, time was passing and nothing had happened, we brought you an update on what we could do, and we heard, we heard the feedback, and we'll take a different approach.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I was going to ask about is funding, and this has not been clear to me since we started talking about funding. I understand there's money from the CO bond that's going to park land development, is that correct?
Yes, sir, there was $4 million in the CO.
Right, and then there's money for, that came out another area of the budget, for design of these parks in District Four, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that amount's about $300,000 or so?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I want to specify the four million that we allocate out the budget for parks. How much is that, is that going to where we need the parks most in District Four?
I couldn't tell you at this time. It was for park development.
Okay. My thing, counsel, is that understanding we've invested, you know, three point six or three point nine million dollars into our legacy and existing parks, that we invest the majority of those funds into the west side, so residents have access to a park without having to drive across town. My hope is that in the future, we're not trying to put money into existing parks. We're working on establishing future parks with that funding.
That is correct.
So this, this four million is for future parks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so could you please be clear? And I know we don't went through the five motions of directions, but what are your top priorities with the four million? Please make it precise and clear. So he's taking notes, and I want you to thank you for everything you have done. And that's a plan already in place that we can use for funding. But you have done a great job with what you're working with. But what are your top priorities, Councilmember Board, with the four million?
The top priority is based on the discussion we had as a council during that meeting, is to focus on the two community parks. I don't know if we must put it up, two million for this one, two million for the other one, but those two.
So two million for each park. So I, from what I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, two million for both parks, but what if one park need more than two million? Could it be one park first to make sure you have a solid park or bits and pieces?
It is.
I think that should be more detailed on how you want that to play out.
That makes sense, and I'm sure some other councilmembers will add in. I'd love to hear their feedback. But if we work on establishing both at the same time, it would guarantee we're not waiting five, six, seven, eight years to get started on the next one, or we're not taking five, six years to improve the first one and then starting on the next one, but establishing those parks. In that same conversation, we talked about at least putting fields out there, doing sidewalks, some of the simple things, and then finding a funding mechanism to really improve these parks over time.
Okay, that's good. Do you have in detail everything that the council requested? How long ago, months ago?
This was February of twenty twenty-two.
So before we, just one thing I do recommend, Councilmember Board, to make sure, and I agree with Councilmember Segaro on some of the things he said, is to make sure everything is detailed that will be moving forward. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Just to be clear, Mr. Cagle, there's no point in, we don't need to allocate those funds specifically if they're for future parks. Is that what we're saying? There's no, there's no need to specifically, because we don't have a number to?
There's no need, but if it makes the council feel better, I mean, that's.
We're saying future parks for the?
Is that a motion of direction?
I was asking a question. I just want clarity on whether we thought that that was unnecessary. And then just to be clear, on the two parks that you're referring to, can you just state again? I know we talked specifically about Elm's Road and Robinette. That's the twenty-three acres. Can you confirm, I'm sorry, Prue Ranch was the second one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you. I guess that's all. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Boyd that District Four does need some more quality of life amenities. And I believe, again, to kind of reiterate what we spoke about originally, was to just go in there and do the simple things that, it costs money anyways, but maybe it doesn't cost as much, just do some flatwork, some lighting, some parking, and just let it be open green space with a trail running through it, connectivity. And then as you, as the city moves forward, then you can come back and add to those things. The only caution I wanted to add is, speaking specifically about the four million dollars, is it's for park development, period. I don't know if there are any other parks throughout the city that are part of that. I'm not talking about existing parks, like new parks that maybe are in the queue somewhere. So I don't want to say, well, two million for Robinette and two million for Prue Ranch, and then there's another one in the queue in another part of town that could use it, that goes by the wayside. So while I agree that District Four should be a priority, especially these two parks that we're talking about, I think maybe that's something staff can come back to us with, or the city manager, and kind of let us know what other projects may be in the queue, and if they are able to quantify a number for those projects. And that way we know, okay, well, the only other project is this one other one, and it needs roughly eight hundred thousand dollars. Well, then we know you have four million dollars that you could allocate for these two parks. So what, again, what I don't want to do is leave out any other projects that may be in the queue. So I think we just need to do the due diligence and make sure that we're making these motions responsibly, so.
So you're looking at it from the perspective of the parks, master plan, that these things have already been planned, put in place, and it was on a timeline. So to ensure that if that's the case, that money that's already been put out there, go toward that. Am I understanding you? Whatever plan it might be, okay. All right, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Let me see how many times y'all have been.
I, you know, going along with the discussion, I agree. But I, we had five, five motions of directions, and staff has just now started planning, I think, adding anymore just yet until we've had a complete picture. I think it'd be too soon. And I would, and since now that we've reiterated what the motions of the direction are, I think that's necessary to come back, give staff a chance to come back, and with the plan for, with the recommended plan for applying that four million dollars that we had already provided to apply for new parks.
All right, that's, okay. And Councilmember Solomon, because everybody else has spoken twice, so, myself, Mayor Proton, Councilmember Segaro got one, but Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that we, I concur with Councilmember Alvarez. I think that we need to just make a whole assessment of everything first, before we start talking about four million dollars, because it could have been already designated. We don't know. But I do think that we need to move forward with District Four in terms of that section, which I would love to go and see. And I wanted to ask Councilmember Board about, you mentioned about, I think we had twenty-three acres that you were looking at a large part. I wasn't here, so I'm just trying to get caught up on.
Sure, that's, that's a good point. And I would love to take you out there to those two sites. At the intersection of Elm's Road and Robinette,
Okay.
there's a twenty-three acre tract that runs whatever direction it is. And then the other one is on the south, southern portion of West Anshooter in the Goodnight Ranch neighborhood, where you have houses surrounding them. And so these two tracts we identified, we wouldn't have to necessarily pay money for. They're easy to get to, and there's a lot of potential with them. So those are the two tracts.
But the one you were talking about was a larger one that she did not mention.
No, you might be talking about the Fort Hood proposed one that's a hundred and ten acres. Is that the one you're referencing?
Okay, it must be.
That was a separate park that was a part of that presentation. That's a future deal that staff has to work on.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would be, would love to go out there and actually see with you and look at those.
Thank you, Councilmember Board. And the last person is Mayor Proton.
Well, we're at the end of the evening, and I think listening to you.
No, we still have some more. Okay.
And I really think that we need to start from the beginning with this. We need to go back, and we need to view what Councilman Board has stated. And I really like what Mr. Cagle said, that we're so understaffed, and we're so busy, and we have so many things going on, that we need to get someone in. We need to get someone in to look at these plans. And I'm not sure of the person that we get in for parks, but to get together, maybe Councilman Board, you, Mrs. Snook, and Mr. Cagle, and you all sit down, start from the old motions, and let's work our way through with someone to help.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. And any decision that is a council decision, any motion of direction, it is a council decision. We are a team. We don't, someone can have an idea, but it takes four people to move that motion forward. So I don't want us to get all divided, he, she, me, and I. It's us. Councilmember Adams.
I just want to make sure, we don't need a motion of direction or anything now, because we've already, the ones that have been addressed have already addressed the needs.
The past, the future is already completed.
Right, I know, and there's still, I know there's still some more to be built to that.
True.
So for the right-of-way or any of that, is there a motion of direction needed for that? Is it included?
No, sir, because I think council, I think it will get a repeat from Mr. Cagle to clarify what you just stated. Mr. Cagle, what is the, the council with the first two that was supposed to be done first?
I'm clear. We need to bring back the land on the Robinette Community Park or Fort Hood Trail Phase Two, whatever you want to call it, Prue Ranch Road. And we'll also bring back design contracts for both of those.
Thank you. Mrs. Snook, once again, you, Mr. Cagle, your staff and team, thank you for all that you do. And we're truly grateful you coming in, taking over. And trust me, that master plan, parks, master plan, it's a beast. It's a beast, because we're really trying to do the comprehensive plan, more green space. And I know there was things already in the mix when you came in. And I'm truly appreciative, and the council's appreciative and everything that you and your staff have done, and you too, Mr. Cagle, and your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-three zero nine three, twenty twenty-four, total solar eclipse briefing.
Thank you, Chief Kabinski. Welcome back. I am excited about the.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy to be back for the fourth time this evening. All right. Well, I'm going to open this up with the message, the overall message, plan for the inconvenience. That's what this discussion is going to be on. This is not something to get too worked up about. There's a lot of inaccurate information that's being tossed around about the solar eclipse, and we kind of equate it to Y two K right now. Okay, there's a lot of planning that went in, and then nothing happened. We do know something's coming. We are planning for it, and we have plans in place. We just don't know what to expect. But I'll share some facts and data with you. So a little bit of background, we have a total, total solar eclipse that's coming, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is known as the Great North American Eclipse. The path of totality starts in Mexico, crosses thirteen U.S. states, and into part of Canada, and cuts right across Texas from southwest to northeast. So we are not the only city that will be affected by this path of totality. And I'll talk a little more about that in a minute. Colleen is in the path of totality, and we are about an hour from the center line, which is just east of Lampasis. Center line is where the longest amount of darkness is going to happen. And there are people from all over the world that want to be in the darkness for as long as they can while the sun is out. And it draws people from all over the world, to be quite honest. So we're going to experience total eclipse for a total of about four minutes and sixteen seconds. This is greater than Austin, San Antonio, Fort Worth, Dallas, and Waco. So all of those large cities are only going to have anywhere from one to three minutes and fifty seconds. Waco will have four minutes and eleven seconds. I know we're talking about seconds here, guys and gals. But it's important to those who want to be in the path of totality for as long as possible. So we're going to experience this total eclipse for a total, total eclipse for four minutes and sixteen seconds. There's three types of eclipses. I'm not going to get too crazy into the explanations of these, but the, there are eclipses that happen every eighteen months somewhere on Earth, and that lasts only a few minutes. But this type of eclipse, where the sun covers, or the moon covers the sun completely during the day, we only see once every forty years. And central Texas won't see this again, hopefully I'm still alive at that point. Here's a little bit of a map and the path. So where these red lines are that you see, that is the outer edge of the path of totality. That's where you only see thirty seconds of darkness or so. That blue line in the middle, that's the center line. That's where you'll see the longest of, you know, nearly five minutes of darkness. And you can see it cuts through Texas. A little bit closer, you can see Lampasis and Gatesville. Those are areas of concern. We're right here in Colleen, so we are going to be affected. We are actually worried more about those smaller cities that are not able to handle the large influx of people that are expected. And that's where the most people are going to want to go. They want to go right in the center. Human nature, we want to be in the middle of the fun and commotion, for lack of better words. So one thing we want to talk about is how the public can prepare. Remember, we said plan for the inconvenience. It is going to be inconvenient. We know that people are coming to the city of Colleen. Hotels have been rented out already to the tune of four and five hundred dollars a night for this entire weekend. This happens on a Monday at two P.M. So our anticipation is that people will start coming on Friday. They'll have events on Saturday. More people will come Sunday, and then come Monday, two o'clock, total eclipse happens. People are going to stay overnight in hotels. That's good news for the city. I do want to share some of the good news first. However, it's going to create a strain on the system where a city that's prepared and able to handle a hundred and sixty thousand or so people on any given day. And we will see an influx in people into the city, and maybe passing through, just going to Gatesville or Lampasis and staying in Colleen. Or maybe they'll stay in Colleen and take part of the activities here because they're happy with four minutes and sixteen seconds. The extra fifteen or twenty seconds isn't worth it for the drive. We don't know. We don't understand. But we know that people need to prepare for the inconvenience. We have already had, and I'll talk about things that I've already done, but we want to make sure our community members know that they should get their fuel and groceries a few days ahead of time, that daily errands you should plan ahead of time, because we're going to see increased traffic in the area, and stay off your main roads. So a little bit of preparedness and planning, which the emergency management office will be talking more about, and you'll see a whole lot more communication to the public as we get closer. If we started doing it now, people are going to forget. And just kind of tune it out, almost like Y two K happened. Nobody really cared about it until pretty much November of nineteen ninety-nine. What do businesses need to do? They need to make sure that they're stocked two weeks ahead of time, because deliveries can be delayed if we have increased traffic. Have an online reservation system for food or seating, because other places who have experienced this, most recently in two thousand and seventeen, they said restaurants were full, more good news, ladies and gentlemen. Restaurants were full for the entire weekend, with three and four-hour waits for some places for people to eat. And schedule staffing with heavy traffic in mind. So if your shift change is at three P.M. at the HEB, we've told businesses, start having your three P.M. employees plan on coming in at one P.M., so that if they get delayed because of traffic, we have a good continuity. So we are putting messages out there, especially to our business community. Some of the safety recommendations, we will again be discussing more in depth. Looking directly at the sun is unsafe, except during that maybe thirty seconds where the moon completely covers the sun. So ladies and gentlemen, don't look up at the sun without eye protection. But especially with the solar eclipse, sunglasses aren't the proper method. You have to have things that have a shade factor of twelve or greater. Plan extra travel time again for your errands and appointments. Please don't look up at the sun while you're driving, or at the moon covering the sun. If you're going to do that, stop and pull over. To be honest, these are things that we've heard from other communities that happen. Car accidents occurred because people were looking up rather than looking straight ahead. And there's a lot of regional, county, and local public safety planning meetings that have been taking place all year. I'll go through that timeline. And the other thing that the public can do is sign up for the emergency notifications by going to Colleen E. Alerts and getting that method of communication set up. So what have we done as a city? This isn't new to us. We've been on top of this since November of two thousand and twenty-two. There was an initial press conference that was discussed back then. And more involved with the community after that was business preparedness. The convention, Visitors Bureau, held business preparedness workshops, town halls, in February and March of two thousand and twenty-three. We put a news release out, the city did, in April of two thousand and twenty-three, a year out, just to say the eclipse is coming. And we also had some community preparedness info that started in February of two thousand and twenty-four. Visitor information will start in early April of two thousand and twenty-four. Visitors aren't going to look until they're on their way here to see where to go. The reason we want to put our community preparedness info out in February is because it will stay fresh in the minds of our hundred and sixty-some thousand residents. And that's where we want it to be, is at the forefront, as opposed to, yeah, I think I heard something about that three months ago, because I can promise you, things are going to change all the way up until February for sure. Places to look for information, we've already put the colinetexas.gov backslash eclipse site up. That has been up and running for a number of months now, as well as visitcolleen.com for the chamber. for the chamber, uh, I'm sorry, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and then of course, following the city on social media, Facebook, Instagram, um, all of the socia's. So a couple of other items before we get into questions, just to give you some perspective on, on what we have coming. The city of Marion, Illinois, in August of 2017, when the same exact thing happened, um, their population was 16,855, they had no major events planned for the city. They did prepare their community and businesses prior to the event, and they saw an estimated amount of 50,000 visitors to the city over that three-day time period. So roughly double, almost triple of the, the population. That's where our concern comes in for the Gatesville and Lampasis, that are the smaller towns, because they were right in the center line, uh, city of Marion. The biggest issue that they had was when the sun came back out, everybody decided to leave at the same time. So three, three days of people coming in, slowly ramping up, everybody decided to leave, and a three-hour trip took 12 hours to get out of town. Their, uh, their Chamber of Commerce said be ready for anything. Grand Island, Nebraska, population 52,000, they held a three-day, uh, it was a three-day time span, and they estimated anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 visitors, all hotels completely full, and a lot of pop-up vendors showed up throughout the city that were providing solar eclipse things and gadgets and stuff to sell. Most importantly to us is Clarso, Tennessee, their population 173,000, so we're modeling what they saw happen closely to us, because we're a larger city. They did some pre-planning, but nothing significant, all of their restaurants were full for four days, many visitors came early, two to four days prior, all campgrounds and hotels were full, and then there was a three-to-four-hour traffic jam after the eclipse was over. They saw increased demand on services, but nothing in ways of, uh, major disasters. Stress is on EMS, because you're going to call more for ambulances for people who come in, um, police services, public work services, there were stresses on those systems, they had prepared for it, and they were able to manage them without any issues. So that's where we're kind of modeling our, our previous experience from. Uh, they, they had shared that even the lowest-quality hotels were charging $400 per night by the time that they got things, um, up and running and situated. And again, Carbondale, Illinois, 21,000-person city, it's a college town though, so it's kind of hard to figure out, uh, how much that worked. They said they had approximately 50,000 visitors over the four-day period, and these are not all visitors that stayed. Some came for the events prior to the eclipse and didn't really care about the sun, they just wanted to come for the special events and the parties. So we, uh, have some town halls planned for the community, uh, Emergency Management in December. We don't want to get too far ahead again, because right now, if we held a town hall, you're going to ask questions, and our citizens will ask questions that we just don't have the answers to. Um, there are many unknowns here, but what we can tell you is that the county as a whole has been having planning meetings, we've had three already. We are going to break the city and, or the county into three, Emergency Operations Center, uh, one for east, one for west, and one for central Bell County. Colleen will be the Emergency Operations Center designated for the west part of Bell County, and we are working on securing all resources that are available, working with our volunteer fire departments, our police agencies, to say what staffing is going to be available on each day, and then they're going to report to a central location and stage all of their resources there, and then we'll move all of our resources from a central out to wherever we see the increases. We'll also have increased staffing, uh, the fire department has already made the determination that vacation time for those four days will be blocked out, uh, so that'll increase our staffing by nine personnel right there. Uh, any sick time usage, you'll have to provide notes, as opposed to following current policy, which allows for, uh, a little bit of leeway on when you have to provide a note. So we are planning up staffing on all city department levels, um, and having those conversations, and, uh, that's the most information I can give you right now with regards to the eclipse, and here for any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for that update. Do you know what we can, are you going to put on, on line where we can get the 12 shade where your eyes can leak or anywhere, we can purchase those items?
Yes, absolutely, uh, Emergency Management Office is going to work with, uh, Ms. Ford in her office and Communications to get that onto our city website, along with all the other resources.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I have one, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Adams.
Yeah, I, first I want to cause a quick, a short PTSD moment when you mentioned Y2K, because I couldn't party like it was 1999, because I had to work for 48 hours trying to chase somebody, trying to create a, uh, a mague- uh, amigotin, um, in the national capital region, of all places. Uh, you already asked a question about the EOC, I'm glad to hear that we already planning to do that. Are there any anticipations to declare emergencies, or at a phase level, or have you, because I can, I, and I, I wish that, don't beat me up, City Attorney or Mayor, but I wish we could set up a toll to make money off of people coming in out of Colleen.
Uh, but get on the agenda.
It still applies to the solar eclipse. But, uh, are there any plans to establish, um, uh, any intent, either from the governor's office, the county judge, uh, to establish any emergency declarations?
At the, this point in the game, it's not something that falls under emergency declaration criteria, it's just a, a large special event where we should plan accordingly. Uh, Governor's Office is completely 100% aware of this, of course, uh, Texas Department of Emergency Management as well, all resources are being, uh, given to TDEM, and then the communities that are affected will request resources from them, they'll dole them out as they see fit. We've already started with our requests a number of months ago on things that we can foresee that are going to be needed for, um, just improving medical response, things like that.
And now we, I'm sure we already are, but, uh, the interaction with, with the guys?
Absolutely, we've had, uh, Fort Hood Fire Department involved in the meetings, they have lent, uh, all of their full support to whatever's needed for emergency response, and the, uh, Fort Cabos has been made aware, um, has been in the conversations as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, so I've been able to be privy to a couple of different meetings all across the, the city and the county and discussions, so it's good to know that, um, there's conversations that are taking place, and that we're preparing for, uh, the inconvenience of what might, what might happen, um, that you guys are also taking the lessons from 2017 and actually applying them. So there's a county-wide effort, um, to work together, um, of course, with Texas Dodd and, and all these other emergency management systems that he mentioned, um, so that's also comforting, um, to know that. So a lot of other cities, though, that, um, I've been speaking to and just kind of encountering here recently, they don't have, um, events planned for that particular, uh, weekend, just because they wanted to maintain a level of resources, um, it, do we have anything planned here for the city of Colleen, or we just, I mean, outside partnering with the CTC program?
Well, with CTC, but then also the Arts Commission is wanting, has set aside money for themselves to do some sort of, uh, event, I'm not for sure any of the details yet, but, and I think they were talking about downtown. And our biggest concern with those, Councilwoman Gonzalez, is every large planned event that is there, we have to designate emergency resources to, um, EMS crew, fire crew, police resources, so, um, we, we hope that anything that's planned and sponsored by the city or, or those sorts, uh, we're in the communications with, there's a permit process in place, so that we can limit that, because what we don't want to see is five or six large events, uh, that all those extra resources we have by, uh, staffing changes for those three days, um, are completely depleted right out of the gates. We want to make sure we can respond to our citizens who live here, reside here 24/7, and provide the service levels that they expect.
Correct, and so then, one of the other things that I noticed was a big challenge, a lot of the chambers of commerce, the Rotary Clubs, they seem to all be very much involved also in these conversations and trying to get the word out to area businesses, just because of parking situations, we're talking about off the highway and things like that, um, but what about the smaller businesses? So we know, like you, to your point, we can put them out on billboards, we're starting early, you guys have been doing this for over a year, you said the website's been up for a while, people, some people still don't know that. So what do you recommend, um, is there anything else that we can do to make sure that the smaller businesses are aware and preparing as well, and, and tuning into the websites that we have and the information that we have?
Uh, there's so many modes of communication, and it's hard to hone in on any one, uh, mode of communication that a small business utilizes to get their information. Uh, if, it, again, just a recommendation, I don't know if it's even possible, but putting it in their water bill, putting an insert in the water bill, go to, uh, the city of Colleen website to find out more information, or go to the, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau or the Chamber website. Ultimately, businesses should go to the Chamber, that's where they should go for their information. Uh, they've been at the forefront of this, so they have all the information. Uh, that would be one recommendation, if it's possible, to, to get something into, um, into the water bill insert, uh, by November or December sometime, to say, be prepared, contact your local Chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Councilwoman Gonzalez, because Central Texas College is right by Metro Abin Health, and it's also close to Fort Cabos, Donnell Hospital, and that's a great location if someone, I mean, it's going to be rough getting through traffic anyway, but it's have easy access to those, uh, uh, resources in case of emergency, if you can just move everyone in one direction. But thank you, Chief, and, uh, when will we get our next update?
Uh, I think the, the next update probably should be end of January sometime. That'll, uh, give some information and feedback from, uh, the one community town hall that we've held, and we should have more information from other, um, stakeholders and outside agencies.
All right, and we'll, uh, I know Janelle is our executive director, Mrs. Ford, uh, is really doing a lot of great videos, and will you be doing a video with the Communication Department, like the showdown between you and Chief Lopez, something like that? We look forward to that, I mean, it's, it's nice.
We can absolutely work on, on some additional videos that will get the message out for preparedness for this event.
And that will go back to what Councilwoman Gonzalez stated, getting the word out. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary.
DS 23 094, receive quarterly financial report.
Welcome back, Mrs. Tanglin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. This is not, not, this is not as exciting as it clicks, uh, but, uh, you know, let's talk about some numbers. Uh, the overview for the quarterly, uh, finance report, we're going to look at some staffing indicators, economic indicators, uh, new construction permits, sales taxes, and we're going to review the major operating funds, and at the end, we're going to have an ARPA funding update. For the, uh, executive dashboard, for the personal information, we have the authorized positions over here, and then, um, we have 210 separations, uh, that include retire, retire, I'm sorry, retirees, and we all, we are, we have 216 new hire, hires for, uh, from October 1st to, uh, to June. I want to mention that on finance, uh, we still have municipal court in there, out of this 110, uh, employees, 24 belongs to municipal court, and 11 is out of the 25, uh, and they have hired four out of those 28. For the new construction permits, uh, for fiscal year 23, we had 288, and for some reason, uh, our chart didn't go all the way up, but it's 427 for fiscal year 22, so we have a couple of hundred that, uh, more last fiscal year than this fiscal year. Sales tax, uh, we can see a hard sales tax increase during the years, or throughout the years, uh, but, uh, right now, we start seeing that they're going to start to normalize, and then you can see that in here, we have a couple of decreases, uh, in the last, uh, this is an increase, decrease, this is a decrease, uh, in the last, uh, quarter, and it's, uh, a 1% decrease in sales taxes. So you're going to start seeing that the, uh, it's going to start level, leveling. Uh, this is your breakdown of sales tax by economic category. And now we're going to go into the numbers, we're going to talk about general fund, remember, this is the third quarter, so 66.6%, you see 66.6% and, and 9% of budget, I mean, we're doing great, uh, now, and always in revenue, uh, general fund, always we, uh, collect property taxes ahead of time, so you're always going to see that number higher from the beginning with, so, but we still have 14%. Uh, overall, we are 83% of collected of budget, uh, we have 68% in governmental charges for services, 76, fines and fees, 80%, so you can see that we're doing really good in revenues, uh, in the third quarter. For expenses, as I say, 66% is a good number, right? Public safety is a 68, uh, and that is because, uh, fire department is a 71%, uh, with their separation costs and stuff like that, they're, they're really a little bit higher than normal. And then, uh, PD is a public, I mean, I'm sorry, Police Department is, uh, 66% too. And then you can see they're lower, 66 is good, and the transfers out there are 99%, uh, because we already, uh, transferred the, uh, excess of fund balance. Uh, last year, uh, we did the transfer of excess fund balance in August, because this year we were a little bit more proactive, we brought up the, uh, excess of fund balance at the beginning of the year, instead of waiting until the end of the year, uh, budget amendment. So that's why you see the $10 million difference in here. So for the fund, fund balance ending is 42, we have a net change of 8.28 for this fiscal, uh, for this, uh, end quarter. Water and sewer, uh, we had operating, operating revenue funds at 71%, the expenses, we are 67%. Uh, we have, uh, contributions and transfers at 83%, the non-operating revenues and expenses, debt services is included in here, and that's why you only see 10%. The, uh, debt payments are done July and August, so next quarter, you're going to see that number will be higher. This is our, uh, water revenue versus rainfall, as you can see, we have received about 20.10 of inches, water inches this year, a little bit more than, uh, last year, but it's still, we have a drought this year. Now we go to solid waste fund, uh, and then, uh, you can see the operating, operating revenues and solid waste is 81%, our operating expenses are 69%. The same thing with the, uh, non-operating revenues and expenses and debt services, you will see that number higher, um, by the end of next quarter, because we pay debt services, uh, in July and August. And your, uh, net position ending will be 7.3 millions. For drainage, uh, utility fund, we are 75% operating revenues, and our operating expenses is 58%. Same here with debt services, and the contributions and transfers are 86%, 1.9 to, or 2.0 millions ending net position for this quarter. For aviation funds, operating revenues, we have a 70%, expenses are 64%, uh, contributions and transfers are 0%, uh, they do not have debt services though, uh, but, uh, they probably have a couple of transfers that are going to come at the end of the year, and the non-operating revenues and expenses are 89%. Now we go into the hotel occupancy tax. This is the percentage of the budget for total revenues is 75%, and the total expenditure, expenditures are only at 48%. The net change in balance is almost a million, and then, uh, uh, sorry, the ending fund balance, 2.64. For the street maintenance fund, we got a 75%, I'm sorry, that's for only the street maintenance fee, the total revenue is 76%. Uh, you guys can see, uh, the, uh, for investment earnings, we are very close to 100, this one, we, we, way over, uh, 100%, because the, uh, interest earnings we're receiving are humongous this year. Public works, 79% of expenditures, uh, debt services, uh, is 0%, because we do have the, uh, payments at the, in July and August, and then so the total expenditures are 48%. And the change fund balance is 4.0 millions. This is the fund and the balance, I apologize, this is the net change. And that's all for the major funds and the, uh, street maintenance fund and hotel fund. Now we go into the American Rescue Plan Funding Update. This update is, um, posted August, uh, 31st, uh, and then we have a spend for hotel occupancy tax fund, or the allocation for, for hot fund, we have a spend, 802, out of the $2 million allocated. For premium, uh, premium pay, this is the amount that we have spent, uh, total for, uh, the general fund is 6.4 out of the 8.5 million. For the CIP, we have a spend 3.3 million out of 17, uh, just, uh, know that the, uh, the EOC is working right now, we're, we are ready. We already did the bid, and we're working in all the details, and so it's gonna start spending a lot more in the next few months. For the other approved uses, youth summer program, traffic monitoring, speed mitigation, travel upgrades, Central Texas alcohol, and all, at the grocery store, we have spent $200,000 out of the 789 allocated. So the total, we have spent 10.7 millions out of the 28.9 millions that were allocated. I know I went a little bit fast, but I just wanted to have time, you have any questions.
Thank you so much for that overview. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. First, that was the fastest financial brief I've ever.
I tried to fast, we're at the end of the day.
And I appreciate it.
Yes.
And I actually got something. I did have a question, I was paying attention. In the, so with the deal we just made with Harker Heights, we're covering, where would that, that will show, that will increase the debt, or decrease the debt service expenditures on the, on the water, the water and sewer fund, correct?
No, so the Harker Heights deal with WCID, it will decrease the debt services and WCID. For, we made payments to WCID for that debt payment, right? So it will decrease those expenses for fiscal year 24.
And we'll add the next, on the next, we'll see the change on the next update?
You will see the change in fiscal year 24.
Oh, okay.
So in next, in next quarter, the report will be the end.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that overview. Great job. Thank you, Madam Secretary. You're welcome. This is our last item.
Yes ma'am.
Getting you ready, Mayor Protem, get all your stuff together.
DS 23095, receive an overview of the subdivision development review and approval process.
Mr. Rebell, thank you, thank you so much, and Mr. Kegel for bringing this forth. It's been a while, but I'm grateful it's here.
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. This is an overview of development process. What I would ask you to do is just think about the development, maybe it's a 100-acre development, maybe it's one lot, and maybe it's completely filled with vegetation. Just think about that, and maybe it's outside the city limits. And all of the processes associated with dealing with that, bringing that virgin piece of land through our development regulation codes and requirements to a place where a house could be put on it, and people could be, can occupy it, is what we're gonna focus on. And so this development process is dealing with the subdivision process associated with residential development. As you can see, the key components, if something is located outside of the city, obviously it has to be annexed in. The annexations in terms of the process itself, the requirements associated with that in terms of notifications and reviews, takes about six to eight weeks. If you think about that virgin piece of property, if it has to, once it comes into the city, it typically comes in with the initial agricultural zoning, and so if there's a need for a future land use amendment for the map, or a need for rezoning, in most cases, it will be, especially if you're trying to do residential, then that could be eight to 16 weeks in terms of that review process. Once that, once they've gotten through the future land use amendment and the zoning, if necessary, then they would submit a preliminary plat. That preliminary plat basically is saying, okay, for that one acre, for that, what did I say, 100 acres, one lot, they would be basically sharing how many lots they want. So maybe they wanna put 500 lots on the property. And so that preliminary plat would show those 500 lots, it would show the layout of the streets, the layout of the utilities, and all of that has to be reviewed by staff to make sure that that conforms with all the development codes. Once they've got, and that could take six to 12 weeks. Once they've got through that process, then they're at the point where they're ready actually to do their plans for infrastructure. The plans for the roadways that has to be built, the plans for the piping that has to be put in for drainage, the plans associated with water, with sewer, all of those plans has to be per our codes, and all of that has to be submitted and reviewed by a number of different city staff, especially engineering. And that could be six to 12 weeks. And then, once they've gotten through that part, they're working to make sure that things can be recorded in terms of a final plat, and that has to go to Bell County. And so there's staff review that has to take place associated with that, and notifications, and that could be four to eight weeks, and then building permits. And again, with the annexations, I won't go into all of these in detail, but basically, this is just showing the process associated with the annexations. It has to be a hearing, it has to be a written service agreement, and all of that has to take place. And as we said, all of that can be anywhere from six to eight weeks, because there's public notification requirements, as well as, has to be approved by the City Council. If a future land use amendment is necessary, again, that's gonna require about eight weeks because it's not aligning with the comp plan. And in that eight weeks, as you can see in that last bullet, it has to be reviewed by the planning and zoning commission, that takes about four weeks in order for that to happen, and then it has to be reviewed and approved by the City Council, which is the additional four weeks. Then the next step in the process is related to rezoning, if the property has to be rezoned. Then, again, that request will require that, well, these are the typical zonings categories. I won't go into a bunch of details, but basically, single-family townhomes and duplexes. And then also, the zoning may be related to a planned unit development, and you all are very familiar with those, you've seen those with Thousand Oaks, with Bunny Trail PUD, so we won't belabor that point, but in the planned unit development is a little bit more intense, allows for a little bit more density, a little bit more common and open space in different amenities, like you've all have already seen. All of that is a part of the rezoning process, and all of that requires public notification, as mentioned in the slides, and it also requires going to planning and zoning, which is contributing to the time, and also going to you all. And again, that process can take about eight weeks if it's associated with a typical zoning request, rezoning request, and if it's associated with a planned unit development, it could take about 12 weeks. And as we said, when you get to the preliminary plat, you can't move forward with a preliminary plat if you don't have the right zoning, so the zoning has to be in place. Then, as we shared before, that preliminary plat, they're taking that one lot, 100 acres, and laying out, you know, how many lots there are, the locations of the streets, the locations of the utilities, all the easements, and all of that information is per our development requirements, and staff is responsible for reviewing that to make sure that everything is submitted correctly. Also, with the plat, they're also responsible for reviewing to make sure that if there's a thorough fair plan, that if there's a roadway coming through, that that's being allotted for, park, the park master plan, the water master plan, the sewer master plan, the transportation master plan, all of those are checked at this point in the process. This next slide really deals with all of the reviews that's done by staff associated with, was submitted for that plat for somebody who is laying out that development. I won't read this, I think you've already read it. And then, as it relates to preliminary plat, staff, it goes to planning and zoning for approval, and then also, and they do not come to the City Council because that's been delegated to planning and zoning. And then also, planning and zoning is obligated to approve it if it meets all the requirements. It's more so a ministerial duty at that point. That process could take anywhere from six to 12 weeks. The 12 week is related to if there's a subdivision variance that has to be filed, that could add four weeks to it, so that's why it's six to 12 weeks. And then also, per state law, which is a recent change, there is an opportunity to shorten this process, that would take council action, but state law does allow for staff to have the ability to approve plats as opposed to planning and zoning, but that would have to be a decision of the council if there was a wish to shorten timeframes. And then, as a construction of infrastructure, again, putting in the roadway, or the plans associated with putting in roads, we're putting in sewer, we're putting in water, we're putting in drainage infrastructure, all of that has to be submitted, and has to be reviewed by appropriate staff. And then, I'll keep moving, I know you all are ready to go. And then, once that is approved, that process can take anywhere from six to 12 weeks, and then the developer can be given a notice to, that the plans are approved, and then start actually, the actual construction work. The actual construction work for the infrastructure, again, the roads, and the utilities and all of that, is, has to be reviewed by staff, and then once it's approved, it also has to be inspected along the way, to make sure that it would meet all of local, federal, and state requirements. Once the infrastructure work is completed, then developer also has to provide drawings showing basically everything that's been put on that site, and then also, a maintenance bond for all the waters, waste water, streets, and drainage, such that if anything fails during that two-year period, they're on the hook and not the city. Once all of that's been submitted, then the engineer can issue, the city engineer can issue a letter of acceptance of infrastructure. And then for the final plat, again, that's allowing for recording with Bell County, and allowing for the developer to be able to sell lots to home builders, and that's that process there, and that also requires review by staff, similar to the review that's done with the preliminary plat, typically the final is kind of consistent with the preliminary, and that process, as noted on the slide, could take four to eight weeks. And then, once that's done, there's a lot release letter that can be issued, and then that allows for building permits to be applied for, and for those, what did I say, 500 structures to be built on that 100 acres of lot, or something like that, I believe I said. And then those building permit review includes everything that we mentioned in terms of building codes, the architectural standards, landscaping standards, zoning setback, fencing, et cetera. And then there's also right-of-way permit associated with driveways, associated with each one of those homes. That review part, that part of the review process could be anywhere from one to three weeks, and then also, there are inspections that are required to be done from the beginning to the end related to that structure, and at some point, a CFO can be issued for that home to be occupied.
Mr. Rebell, thank you. I have some questions, but I'm gonna go to the council first. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand staff's proposing this in a way to reduce the existing timeframe for plat approvals, which actually does make sense. My concern is taking the approval authority away from the planning and zoning commission and giving it to staff, which I remain leery about. I do have this question, though. If the PNZ is willing to meet more often to meet the needs of the city, how frequently would they need to meet to approve these, both final and preliminary plats?
Right now, that process is taking about four weeks, and they're meeting pretty frequently I don't know if more meetings will help to shorten that time. You know, the state law has provided an opportunity for that time to be shortened, so the four weeks could actually go down to probably about two weeks. But I agree with you, there could be some concerns about taking that authority away from planning and zoning.
Yeah, so how frequently would they need to meet to still meet those? To where we can still collapse these timeframes a little bit?
I don't know if I have an answer for that, sir.
I'd like to, I'd like for the council to have that information.
Sure, sure.
Councilmember, what are you saying? Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you for that. That was a good presentation, and very thorough, and my question is, because I know that in going through a lot of this process, and I may mention, you know, I've had some developers call me in the past, and they say it's taken over a year to get it, and looking at this, it looks like it's a year. So I'm thinking, did we change something? You know, because change is hard, and I understand that, but it sounds like this is something that has always been in place, but, or, because apparently, you know, they seem that we used to do a lot of things more quicker, and now everything seems to slow down, and what has changed?
So this process has always been in place, but if, I don't know if we can call back up the initial slide, but oftentimes, what can happen, well, there are a couple of things that can happen. If I can, let's see. I'll go back to the chart.
That's the first slide.
Yes, ma'am. So oftentimes, what can happen is, is that the rezoning can be done, and then once the developer has gotten the rezoning, they may sit for a while before anything is done, and they may come like six months after that and enter the process again. So that kind of time is not being accounted for here, but that happens more often than not. The other piece that's associated with that is, is that when we do a review, oftentimes, there may be a need for corrections, and there may be a need for resubmission. We don't control the time in terms of how long it takes for that developer or that applicant to resubmit. We only control the time that we do for review, and this is really focused on our times. So, yes, the times could be longer than what's being expressed here, but a lot of that is just the way development happens, so I don't know if there's anything that we can do to control that. And I can tell you, on the building permit end, we are tracking the time that it takes, or the time that it takes to get a building permit reviewed and issued. We try to do 10 working days, and it's happening, as we've said, about one to three weeks. Within one to three weeks, that's happening in terms of that review. But again, sometimes that's impacted because it may take longer for us to get responses back to corrections that we're expecting, but, yes, the process is working. Now, I have heard developers say that, I've submitted a plan, and it was reviewed in two And maybe that did happen in the past, but I don't think that was a thorough review, to be frank.
Well, and I'm glad you brought that up about, because that's the other part that they say, is that they submit something, and when it gets kicked back, and then they're not told what else that has to be done, and I think that, and I think you talked about it before, maybe that's a change that wasn't unexpected, but, you know, they're like, we submit something, we take care of it, but then something else comes up, and that, right there creates delays. And so, you know, I don't know if there's a certain type of checklist or something that can be done and try to eliminate that.
So what we typically do is, we, everybody associated with the review process, whether it's a staff in planning, staff in engineering, and staff in building inspections, or staff in another department, does all of their reviews at the same time, and there's a complete set of reviews that's submitted back to the applicant. If there are corrections that need to be done, sometimes those corrections, when they make those corrections, because they have to change design or something, that may trigger another change, and that may require something else that's hard to control against, but what we can control is to make sure that we do a complete review, and have every, all parties involved, and they provide their comments, and that's what we do, and we do it at one time.
No, I'm glad you're doing this, because I may mention, you know, my thing is not about the builders or anything like that, it's just helping that process, try to smooth out that process, because my fear is that, you know, if we don't continue building it, it's already shortage of inventory, and that increases home prices, and we don't want to do that. And it's funny, because we were looking at that budget, the financial, and on there, that one slide, and it talks about the building permits, and you can see, you know, I would say like 95% of new construction is single residential homes. And that's revenue for the city that, you know, we can't really afford to lose, and so, you know, we lose that, that's a big.
Yes, sir. And we're tracking. We're tracking on those numbers, and the numbers are looking good as it relates to our benchmark for the residential building permits. We're looking at, our benchmark is 10 working days. Just got a report this morning for this past 30 days, it was seven working days. For the past six months, it was about 11, about 8.1 working days. So we're meeting targets, we're tracking, that's allowing for continuous improvement.
You guys are making things happen. I talked to one of the builders recently, and he's I talked to one of the builders recently and he said it took him about three weeks to get his permit and he, he seemed he was okay with it. So I, I think they're getting used to that, you know, instead of, you know, a few days, three weeks. But as long as you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, I think that's important.
Absolutely.
But we just need to remember, you know, to, you know, let the, in other words, you know, what is expected of them. And that's, I think that's the critical aspect. You know, we need, let them know upfront, this is the expectation and I'm sure that I'll get used to it. But then as we improve that process, you know, everything will start working out smoother and we won't have anybody say, you know, we're never going to build in clean because that definitely hurts us. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got about 10 questions versus slides. We can sit back and relax. Um, no, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sagara and Councilmember Boyd asked, asked a couple of questions. I already had. The only other one I had is, great presentation. Is it, is it possible to put that on a, on your website so that anybody got a question about the process can just go and ask? So there's no assumptions? They didn't got to go find the code of ordinance? So it's just available?
Yeah, yeah. So this most certainly is a first step in the conversation with the public. And so we'll develop more materials that's more, even more user-friendly than this because this is more so a pretty academic. So it'll be a more user-friendly, more, you know, graphics and pictures, but yes, we can do that.
All right. And I know the mayor says she had questions. If she didn't, I was going to go ahead and move to adjourn, but I.
You can do it. You, you're not going to fear me. You've got three other councilmembers that want to speak. With that being said, are you finished, Councilmember?
I am.
Okay. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. I like the idea of cutting those timeframes back for unnecessary redundancies if we don't have to take preliminary or final plats to the Planning and Zoning Commission and it can end that staff. It makes sense because a plat, if it meets, and our city attorney's here, she can correct me if I'm wrong, if a plat meets all of the local requirements, PNZ nor council can disapprove it. You have to approve it. So if that's the case, staff knows the requirements better than any of us. If you say it meets the requirements, that's going to be your recommendation to PNZ.
Yes.
Why hold it up to get on PNZ's schedule? They got lots of other things that they can do. They do zoning cases, they do flum cases, they do code revisions. They got a lot of other things that they look at. Preliminary and final plats are probably a small percentage of the things that they are focused on. So if that's a way to help be more efficient, I'm all for it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just looking at this and I'm wondering if, how we, how we will eventually within this department get to where we don't have six to eight weeks, but up to seven weeks or up to 10 weeks to where we, we don't have so much wiggle room in there, but people know what to expect. If I'm doing a development and I know I've got preliminary plat six to 12 weeks, I'd much rather know it's going to be just at eight weeks or just at 10 weeks or anything less than that.
Sure. So on the, for instance, on the preliminary plat, the reason why we've got that variation of six to 12 weeks is because there could be a situation where somebody chooses to apply for a variance. If they choose to apply for a variance and go into the zoning board of adjustment, that's going to take four weeks. And so that's, that's why that 12, that six to 12 weeks is in there. If, if a variance is not necessary, we could easily say that's, that's six to eight weeks.
Yeah.
So, so the variation is not as great, but we're trying to account for, for all the exceptions and the nuances.
Sure. And I guess my point is just for all six processes, there's the dash. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you for this information.
Yes, ma'am.
We had talked before and I just want to confirm that we're still working on or looking at ways that we can make sure that we're working efficiently.
Absolutely.
And smarter. So you had mentioned some things about the permitting process. So those things are still in motion, right? So any way that we can help us expedite our process, you're still actively looking at ways to do that?
Yes, yes. You know, business practices are still being developed and refined, you know, as a part of our continuous improvement efforts. We are about to transition to a new software program called My Permit Now. That's going to help improve efficiency because currently our three divisions are operating off of three databases. That permitting system will allow all of those divisions to operate off of one database. That in and of itself is going to improve efficiency. And that one database also will not only be a database that our staff could see, but our customers can see it as well. So that, that also will help. So there are a number of things that we're doing to improve and enhance efficiency. We've got a great team of folks that's doing a great job within the system that we have and we're doing all we can to help make sure that they can do a better job.
Mr. Revell, once again, thank you very much. But the reason I wanted to see this and wanted it to be presented is that not only for the website, as new councilmembers come in, they have to go through training.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's very important when you're a councilmember, this is going on my sixth year, I think, for Councilmember Sagara, 13 years, sir?
My age?
Not your age. Okay, anyway. I don't know. I don't know where he got age from, but he's probably been serving on this council for probably 13 years. I know 12 for sure, maybe 13 in age. So I think it's very important that this be posted for the public, especially for council when they come through training, the orientation that they get as a new councilmember. There's nothing worse than someone saying, they come before you, they're petitioning to you to understand that I don't think I should pay this or I shouldn't do this. But if the person receive it does not have a working idea of what they're trying to convey over to you, can become very frustrated, like we're not invested. We're invested in anyone that come before the council. But, but this right here, I don't, I'm not a developer or builder. That's not even my world. But I agree with Councilmember Sagara about it's, it is a year if you try to calculate everything up, more so give or take. But when you do put this on the Facebook page, I mean, not Facebook, but on our website, put that caveat that, you know, give or takes. Let them know that this is not concrete because they don't expect this to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Just like if we put it out there, we don't need any more chaos and confusion than what it is going on now. And I commend you for working with the developers and builders and the staff as we move forward to try to get something really put in place with our architectural designs. Because that's important because we need them and they need us. So for that, thank you. With that being said, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Revell, thank you for a wonderful report. Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
A second.
All right. All in favor, leave in the adjourn. Thank you all. Drive safe home.